Everybody, thanks for coming to the meeting tonight. We'll call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, before we get started on the agenda, we have a little housekeeping to do. We have to do the swearing in, the oath of office for everybody who was elected or re-elected. So, Tim, if you want to take it, we'll do everybody at the same time.
Sure, that's right. So, if you'll stand up. And the way this will work is, I'll read through it with you, and when I say, "I," state your name, you'll state your name. And then also towards when we get to the office, so the mayor's office is a little different, so he'll say something a little differently, but you'll just say the office as you're in the language, for both of you would be councilperson. Alright?
I state your name.
I, Chris McKern.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties.
That I will discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Mayor.
Councilperson.
In the city of Casson.
In the city of Casson.
The state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thanks, everybody.
Alright. We'll go ahead and get started with the approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions anybody has? Paul, anything?
Nope.
Dan?
Nothing.
Alright, okay. We've got two out of the mayor's report. We're going to add the park board appointments for the park board positions. And then under the engineer's report, we'll add J2, just a project update on a few of the projects. Other than that, we will, I'll look for the approval of the agenda.
Make the motion go approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Approved. Onto the consent agenda. Is there any questions for administration on the consent agenda items?
No.
Ryan, anybody? No? Paul, Dan? Entertainer motion to approve then?
I make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Our first item tonight is visitor to the councils. We have the REFOs presentation, and the floor will be yours.
Oh, gosh. Much power. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm really excited to be back in Casson. I don't need to.
But not now.
Thank you. So, hello, to those of you who I haven't met yet, hello again to those of you who I got the chance to meet with this summer. My name is Emily Karash-Kasey. I am the Director of Community Programs for REFOs, which is a nonprofit organization here in Minnesota that works with historic and old buildings and serving the communities that exist in and around them. We are also the coordinating entity for the Main Street program in the state of Minnesota with the National Main Street Center. And so, that's the capacity in which I came. Last spring, we received a grant from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation to do a downtown assessment in three communities in their 20-county region. Seventeen communities applied. Of those seventeen communities, Casson, Lake City, and Montgomery were selected. We did community engagement over the summer and fall with all three of those communities. And tried to come back in December, but here we are today. Weather and agendas getting long. And really what we are doing is just giving you the feedback of all the information that we gathered from your community members and our site visits while we were here in your community. So, a little bit about us. Our whole methodology is built around historic preservation. That is a scary word for folks sometimes, but really, our purpose with preservation is keeping old buildings up because they are both more environmentally friendly and can be more economically sustainable than new builds. The Main Street model is really embedded in preservation because our historic downtowns are places that we will never be able to recreate, and they're a significant part of the fabric and strength of our community and are very much worth preserving and building into the future of what we want our towns and communities to look like. So, what we're going to go through today, we will go through all of the information that we gathered in our site visit, and we spend quite a bit of time talking through some of the data and comments that we received from the online survey because people are always the most honest when they can be anonymous and online, and they can tell you what they think without having to, you know, say who they are. And we will go through the final report with our findings and recommendations and opportunities that we really see could be helpful for revitalization in downtown Casson. Any questions about the process? Folks out here, any questions about the process? Okay, can you hear me okay? Alright. And I'm very okay with being interrupted, so if you have questions about specific things, same without here, feel free to interrupt me and ask me to explain or go back. So, why do you care about downtown? Why are we spending time thinking about it? Downtown is really this canary coal mine showcase of what the economic health of your community is. If you're going to visit a town, you probably drive through there downtown, you take a look at it, and you get your feeling about what that town is based on what you see in their downtown. That's what new residents do, that's what prospective entrepreneurs do, that is what people who are moving into the community to maybe be a teacher or work at one of the banks in town, they are looking at your downtown as a symbol of the health of your community. It is the biggest example and showcase of the public-private sector in your town. Nowhere else in your community is there such a coming together of private business as well as public infrastructure. It really defines what the local quality of life is. What is available to the folks in your community? What are people proud of in your community? What's the cultural legacy that created the town of Casson? It's a huge part of your tax base. Downtown, even when they feel like they're not doing great, are still probably, in a town this size, the strongest tax, or highest-producing tax area that you have because of property taxes, business taxes, residential, there is such a strong tax base in the downtown. And Main Street is a program that's built around all of those factors. So, Main Street is a national organization. We're nonprofit. There's Main Streets in Iowa, Main Streets in New Mexico, Main Streets in Washington, Main Streets in Florida. We all work together pretty regularly, and it's an asset-based economic development program, which means we help communities define what's working for them, what they already have going on in their towns, and what do they already have that can help work on revitalization without coming up with something that you simply don't have at all. So, we're certainly looking at your downtown through all our Main Street lens. I know the word "Main Street" is kind of tossed around really colloquially, but "Main Street," when I say it, I'm referencing the Greater Main Street program. So, ultimately, what the Main Street program tries to do is to create resources that make it easier to open businesses and succeed in downtown districts, which make your communities more vibrant, more stable, more just economically viable for the folks who live there. So, to do this downtown assessment, we talked to as many people as we could. We really tried to dig into the people who live and work in the community. We know this is a little different than sometimes some different economic development or business studies that happen in a community, simply because they're looking at just basic number data when it comes to money and taxes and what's here and what isn't. When we do our downtown assessments, we find it really important to hear directly from the community what their wants and needs are. One example, in a town we were working with, the chamber, the economic development at the city, local business groups really thought that what they needed to focus on was an arts district. They had some really good stuff going on, they had a lot of artists moving into their community. They thought the answer to what their downtown needed to be was, let's really transform this into an arts district. When we did a downtown assessment with their community, overarching all of that was the community saying, hey, we really love our bike trails on the edge of town, and we'd love to like bike into downtown so we could go get ice cream, or walk around with our kids and look at what's happening in downtown because there's trees and we're along the Mississippi. And it was more important to residents to be able to navigate in and around downtown than put up a bunch of public art. So, their Main Street program decided to spend more money on putting benches in downtown, wayfinding signs, working with the city to build some connectivity to the trails on the edge of town, and those were instantly used because that's what the public wanted, and it doesn't mean that their arts identity went away, or that's something that's not going to happen, but they were able to respond to the needs of their residents in a way that the residents were looking to use and would be much more widely used. So, we focus on now. We really don't dig into what was happening 25 years ago, 10 years ago. We're not talking 25 years down the road either. This isn't as in-depth as a comprehensive plan, but we're really looking at what was happening here in Casson these past several months. And we, at Main Street, really push this idea of lots of little. How many small steps can you take to get to a win rather than just spending all your energy and trying to get that one big win that may or may not work? So, we're going to talk more about that in a little bit. Okay, we're going to dig, where is that mouse? We're going to dig into the survey findings first. So, the first thing we're looking at are, I don't think I can make that any bigger. Can you see that sort of okay? I'll try to explain what all the lines are too.
Yeah, if you can zoom in on it, you just.
This one.
Yeah, will that make it better?
Really?
Can I click Ctrl? Do you have a mouse or a keyboard?
No.
Ctrl plus.
I don't have one.
Outside it?
No, I don't think it's working. Nope. Well.
Twelve plus?
I'll just talk you through what every line says. Oh, you can do it.
Apparently, but it's too big now. Yeah, there we go.
Um, so, this person is, just the people who responded to the survey. I'm not going to lie, I expected it to skew older based on who I talked to in the focus groups. Most folks who came to the focus groups were retirement age. It could have just been that's who was around and doing things. But you have a pretty young community, and that is tremendous. You're not dealing with the same concerns that some communities are, that all of our residents are age 75 and older, and what are we going to do in 10 years? I think I'm going to have to close this and squirrel for every single one. Oh, that's better. Unsurprisingly, not a ton of people who took the survey worked downtown because there's only so many places to be working in downtown. A lot of people did work in Casson but not downtown, and also outside of Dodge County. Again, not surprising, your proximity to Rochester definitely is a big commuter community. Most people who took this survey live in Casson but not, oh my goodness, live in Casson but not downtown. This was open to people who also worked in Casson, so maybe they live in the county but don't live right in town. This is something that I, it seems like a small number, but it's worth noting. So, over 15% of the people who responded said they would live in downtown Casson if they could. One thing we're doing, a lot of conversations with many, many groups around the state is second-story living in downtown areas, especially we're experiencing housing shortages in Greater Minnesota. Activating those second-story spaces as apartments, as residences, is something that can really take a big burden off of some of the housing shortages in your community without having to build a new 200-unit apartment building. So, that is something I think worth considering, that there are people who would live in downtown if there were more apartments available to be lived in, in downtown. Okay, next up, downtown habits. How frequently do you go to downtown? A lot of people answered "every day." Wait, this is really weird now with it zoomed in. Uh, can you zoom back out for me?
Okay, I mean, it looks pretty good to us, I think, from over here.
Yeah, the lines aren't meeting up with the words anymore.
Is that better, or?
Yeah, that's weird. Well.
Still missing days of the week on the right one.
But at least I can tell where they're supposed to go now.
There you go.
Okay, so, this first one, how frequently do you go to downtown Casson? I had a lot of people answer "other" on this one, and they, well, I drive through it every day, which I've never had that many people write that in. So, that kind of skews these answers a little bit, I think. But one that I think is really helpful to look at is, what day of the week do you most typically go downtown? Your Friday and your Saturday are shockingly big for as much as people said there's nothing to do and nowhere to go. People are still going downtown. The people who answered "every day," Monday through Friday, that's typically the folks who are working downtown. Most people go downtown for shopping. Again, surprising considering how many people said there's nowhere to go shopping. Most of the people in this category, and you'll get all of these other answers, so you can dig through them to your heart's content. They'll make you laugh, they'll make you cry, but they're worth looking at. Most people saying "other" went to the grocery store, which I didn't really think about counting in specifically as shopping. So, people were noting, I go to the grocery store in others, pretty often. Most people drive to get to downtown, which I think is a little surprising considering how bike and pedestrian-friendly the rest of the community is, the fact that it's not a super huge spread out town, you don't have major hills to go through, but the fact that most people are still driving downtown is kind of interesting. What time of day do you most typically do your shopping? This isn't just downtown, it could be online, it could be somewhere else. Not surprisingly, because you are dealing with a really working set of folks, they're doing their shopping in the afternoon and evenings. How does downtown's hours reflect that? If there is going to be growth in downtown, how will those hours be considered with who the biggest population segment that would be taking in those businesses? How do you read your local spending habits? This biggest chunk right here is, I try to spend locally within the community. The first screen is, I try to do as much downtown as I can. Usually, these are flipped. Usually, the biggest chunk is like, I try to shop from brick-and-mortar stores within the county, within like the closest big town to me, the Target, the Walmart, whatever. So, the fact that people are considering local spending is a big deal. People are keeping their minds as much as they can towards local dollars instead of going straight to online. This next section is, what is one word you would use to describe downtown? Most of them were, so we break things into positive, neutral, and negative. It is a majority negative to neutral. A lot of them are like dead, need attention, terrible. However, I think it's worth noting that people are saying they're trying. There's a great small-town feel. It's busy. Usually, in downtown, busy is a good thing. I know that might seem counterintuitive, but the idea of having like busyness hubbub is usually, it's the opposite of dead. That's what you want. Oh, gosh. There's a lot of vacant. These are pieces that I think will be really interesting for you to go through as you're looking at all of these answers. We won't go through every single piece, but it is worth mentioning that the majority of folks, when they think downtown, skew a little negative. But that's not the end of the world. So, these next set of data are really looking at the future of Casson. What does that mean? So, by far, that big red bar, the issue behind that is store variety, which is fair. There are certainly fewer stores than there were here five, 10, 20, 50 years ago. However, that's the case everywhere. Big cities, small towns, storefront retail has changed, and it will probably never be what it is again. Even the resurgence we saw of stores and boutiques and specialty places 10, 15 years ago has changed because of how online shopping works. You can have somebody who makes candles and used to have a storefront, and now they just sell them consignment to other places or only sell online. Even, I was just in a place that does like consignment outdoor gear, they do a huge amount of sales online and sell to people in Missouri and Texas. So, there is such a difference in what retail models look like, and unless the internet stops, it's not going to go back to what it was. So, store variety is something I think that can, it can really take over your thinking, or you can acknowledge that it's just going to be different from here on out. The second biggest line, the screen, is vacancies. So, the storefront vacancies. People see those, it's really, oh my gosh, I keep opening that. It's really easy to get concerned and downtrodden and that everything is dead when you see one or two dark windows when 10 windows might be full. It's really easy for those empty spaces to take up more space in our brains than they're actually taking. The third, which we'll talk about in a little bit, is parking. And typically, when we're doing downtown assessments, people in smaller towns don't want to walk more than half a block from where they parked to get to where they're going. That wasn't the issue that people were bringing up here. They were bringing up safety issues specifically around the angled parking, that both drivers and pedestrians don't feel safe moving about in downtown because they don't trust visibility and speed with the angled parking. So, we'll talk about that a little more later. The next biggest is purple, not kid or family-friendly. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. There's a lot more in here, but those are your big four. This light blue line is traffic, I think really tied with that parking comment. What do you want more of downtown? Over 50% of respondents said a restaurant, more restaurants, places to eat. Specialty stores, again, that's tricky, but free public events and destination and experiential places were tied pretty closely within like a percent of each other. These next couple are fill-in-the-blanks. There's a whole lot of responses, so we're not going to go through all of them, but you will get all of this data, and I encourage you to read through it. If you were able to make a big change without thinking about money, what will it be? A lot of people talked about the buildings, the physical buildings in downtown, that we'd fix them, we'd update them. A couple people wanted to tear all of downtown down and start over. I'm going to pretend those aren't real. But a lot of people talked about family-friendly things. I did like this person who said, we ride the railroad tracks, it's hard to sleep. I mean, the railroad is one thing you can't fight. Good luck. But the things that people were talking about, for the most part, were really tangible things, like things for families to do, a restaurant to go eat at with everybody, a place that we feel safe to walk around in, feeling vibrant and active in the community. It wasn't like, I would really like a five-star restaurant. It was, I just want a family-friendly restaurant. They're really specific, tangible asks. There is always somebody who brings up something from 30 years ago that is going to be grumpy about it. One thing that I heard a lot when I was in town was something for teenagers to do, that things for little kids happen, especially through library programming, but there's not a lot for that group who is still at home, they are maybe driving, maybe not, but what is there for teenagers to do? Again, I'm not going to go through all of this. There's a lot. People are really open with their comments on these. But the last one is, do you have any other thoughts about downtown? For as many people who said a negative comment when asked, what's the first thing you think of when you think of downtown, and they said dead, stagnant, whatever, most people had pretty positive things to say in their last comments, like, I know it's trying, I know we're trying to make some progress, I think it's possible for things to change, it's not, well, good, well, trying, everything is over. So, even though their first reaction was negative, there's still hopefulness and excitement, I think, in the possibility of what can exist in downtown. The vacancies were certainly brought up a lot in the other comments, and some people just call out the vacancies, some people have big ideas for what those vacancies might become. So, considering all of the data in there, looking into, so we read through all of the comments and kind of tally like topics, and really take into account both the in-community comments with our downtown walking assessment with like buildings and spaces and that sort of thing. With the online survey, we come to this downtown assessment report that we give you some recommendations and some opportunities that we could see working really well in Casson based on success stories that we've seen in other communities. So, again, this is just language, talking about what a downtown assessment was. You can, you'll all get this. I will send everything to Ian, and he can share it with you all. So, the asset themes, these are pieces that we, as REFOs staff, pulled out from both comments from residents as well as what we saw when we were walking around, popping into businesses, digging around with what's happening in your community. The basics are covered here. You still have a hardware store in downtown. You still have a grocery store in downtown. There is a clinic, there's banks, there's hairstylists, there's a gym, there's a liquor store. All of these things still exist in downtown, and that's becoming really, really rare. Most downtowns have lost their grocery store at this point. A lot have already lost or are in the process of leaving their hardware store. There is so much here in Casson that other communities your size and even bigger wish they had. And I think there is this idea of scarcity that because we don't have three grocery stores, there's this idea of lack. We still have a grocery store in downtown, and that's really tremendous. So, you can, you could live downtown and walk to the basic services that you need to survive as a human. There are lots of little opportunities and spaces. So, for example, the mini-mall thing that's downtown, if you want to try opening a little business, that's a relatively low-scale way to go into a business. Some downtowns only have storefront spaces, and that's, you know, 16 to 2,000 square feet when, if you really only need 400 square feet to start doing what you're doing, that could be a really major shift in expenses. Casson has really scalable opportunities and spaces for people to try out an idea as an entrepreneur. Casson residents want more. They're excited for more. Sometimes, it's easy for residents to get a little complacent about what's happening in a community, but whenever we were talking to focus groups, when I just randomly walked up to people in stores and businesses, and they're like, who is this lady who is asking me questions? People said, yeah, we would love to do more, we would prefer to not drive to Rochester, we would love to be able to have our grandparents come here on the weekends and hang out with us and do things in town with our kids. People want to do things, which, you have a captive audience. People are ready to try what you'll throw at them. And lastly, you know who your audience is. Some towns are really stuck in having to be a tourist town and are so reliant on figuring out how to captivate which new audience of tourists, where they're like, our town is dying, our population numbers are down, who are we trying to recruit to come live here? You have people who are here. You have families, you have a great school system, you have a pretty good idea of who your captive audience is, and that is a huge place to start. your captive audience is and that is a huge place to start. These next priorities are really from the comments that we got in person as well as online. People want something to do in the evenings when they are here, especially in the summer. Winter's great too, but people are especially thinking the summer when it's light till, you know, nine, 10 o'clock. There's a captive audience, they are ready, they want something to do. They don't always need a thing, they don't have to have an event, they want a place to go, a place to be. When I was talking with folks when the dance studio was really in construction, it was a conversation of, "Okay, you drop your kids off at dance for an hour, but then what do you do? Where do you go? Who do you sit with? What are you doing?" The second priority is having some safer parking and access for pedestrians and drivers. Usually the conversation is just focused around pedestrians, but driver safety, I think, is really significant too. Just my own visibility when I was here, in three hours when I was out walking around in an afternoon, I saw two near misses of people backing out in the angled parking just because someone was driving too fast. So I think that is something that is worth having a conversation about. Fixing the buildings, especially the facades before it's too late. There's this idea that these buildings are kind of a ticking time bomb and while it's not an emergency, at some point it could be. Delaying upkeep just kind of adds on more and more problems and so having opportunities for some of the fixes to happen and for some just cosmetic work to happen too is timely. This idea of newcomer welcoming efforts. It's just a small-town thing that you're not from a town unless you're born there, but there's people who've lived here for 15, 20 years who are an integral part of the Kaffin community acknowledging that, "Hey, when I moved here, I didn't feel super welcome right away and we have new people coming here. How do we make them feel welcome? How do we let them know about what we've got?" Because you do have really good things going on. And creating a family-friendly place to gather that's not a bar. Mind you, I had a great dinner at the Legion. I saw a handful of families there with little kids. It's not that it's not family-friendly, it's that it's still a bar and the idea of being able to take your kids somewhere that isn't just a bar. Granted, I grew up in the 80s, we went to bars all the time, but we also went to other places too, right? I pulled out this quote, which I really loved, from one of the respondents to the survey that says, "We can and need to do better. Make Kaffin a place people not only sleep, but live." I really loved that comment because as a bedroom community, people are choosing to live here, but what are they doing to live here? Are they just in their houses watching TV and going to bed? Or are they living in the community? So, by the numbers, we had five focus groups with 27 people. That's kind of light attendance, to be honest. I know that Kathy and Robert did a lot of work pounding the pavement to get folks to come and they just weren't there. I did 19 stops in businesses with my colleague Heidi. That doesn't mean we talked to 19 people, we talked to whoever was in that business. Like in the fabric store, there were probably 10 people and we talked to all 10 of them, but it was one stop. There were 211 online survey responses. The responses were great. Honestly, again, kind of a light response as opposed to some of the other downtown assessment population ratios that we do, but I think that leads to some opportunities. So, here are some of our recommendations. Here's another quote that has really kind of stuck with me as I've been going through Kaffin's responses. "I don't really consider it downtown. It's a quiet place to go get things or services when needed, not lots else to offer." I think that is a good way of starting your conversation of, "Is this what we want our downtown to be like? Do we want it just a quiet place where people can go get things in the day and leave? Or do we want it to be more of a community hub gathering place?" So, the three recommendations we're giving you are pieces that we dig into a little bit and we give you several examples from other places that we can easily hand you toolkits and ideas for if you watch them. So the first one is really focused frankly at the city and economic development corner, which is finding ways to support entrepreneurship and rehab efforts in downtown. This can be a really big scary challenge to tackle, but there are ways to break it up into small steps and little pieces and there are groups out there that have expertise and knowledge and resources that can help talk you through some of these challenges. One thing that I think can be really easy to fall into a pattern of is thinking of, "Well, this is a downtown, we should have retail spaces." You have spaces that used to be retail, but what can they be used for now? One example that I loved were the folks down in the tattoo shop. It was a bright cheerful lovely space. They were so great to talk to, had such excitement about being in Kaffin. That's a place that people are going to go and tattoo places often have like super loyal customers, so they're going to come back and they're in there for probably two to four hours per person getting their tattoo. They're probably going to want a coffee, they're probably going to want a snack, they're probably going to want to do something else while they're out and about. So places like that really are a great place to have in your downtown. Another place that really surprised and frankly delighted me was the clock shop. You cannot find somebody to repair clocks within 200 miles up here and you have one of those places here. Sure, it's not somewhere people are going to come and hang out all the time, but the people who go there are going to need it and will probably be repeat customers. So what other places like that could Kaffin have? What people are maybe working in their garages or back rooms at their houses that you could convince to move into a storefront or move into a place with a couple other people to share a space? There are certainly people in Kaffin already who could start filling up spaces in downtown. Are there photographers? Are there graphic designers? Are there people who being out in the storefront could be really good for them, but also really good for Kaffin? Another piece to really consider, and this is a little bit harder, I'm going to talk about money, please don't freak out, is how is the city economic development, even the county, how are people planning to allocate funds towards downtown? Because ultimately, it will probably take some skin in the game from public entities offering maybe low-interest loans or facade grants or tax abatement for rehabilitation in downtown buildings. I know Kaffin has already started down some of these conversations, but there maybe needs to be a wider door opening for potential rehabilitators to find out more about those opportunities or bigger conversations about where can we get some of these funds? The second recommendation, leveraging some special events and programming into regular activity. Now, when I say special events, it doesn't have to mean like we have to have a special Saturday event every week. Certainly not. It can be, once a quarter, something happens in downtown. I know folks really loved the St. Patrick's Day stuff that happened last year and Oktoberfest that happened this year. Even one thing a quarter starts to get people excited and involved and thinking about what's next. Another example is, how can you do things that can last over several weeks that don't require as much planning and volunteer and investment and are catered towards family and kids? So we gave a few examples, like some chalk art, some story walk, book things throughout downtown. There are so many cool ideas that communities have explored specifically during COVID of how to activate their downtowns in a really regular way. Third, leveraging food trucks as a potential to kind of offset or fill some restaurant spaces. Restaurants are notoriously hard to open and keep open. However, you have some good proximity to Rochester. Rochester has a lot of food trucks. Maybe you start to create a regular every Saturday or every Thursday, one Thursday night a month, there's a food truck quart in downtown and people can go and eat and just be out and about and maybe they find one that's especially great in Kaffin and how can you potentially leverage that food truck owner into a potentially vacant restaurant space? We shared an example from Fido, which that very thing happened and the restaurant that opened was successful a lot faster because it already had an audience. People already knew them, they loved them, they were excited that they were in a physical space and out of just the food truck. Recommendation three, there are things here, there are restaurants here. A lot of the respondents really spoke as if there was nothing and there are. There's restaurant options downtown, but how are those options being communicated? Does the community know when they're open? Do they know what hours things have changed on the weekends? And leveraging conversations with those business owners along with the Chamber or other business groups to make it clear how to find the information is going to be really important. Which leads to one of the opportunities, I'm going to talk about the last one first, activating a community calendar or info hub. I think one of the challenges in getting feedback from the community was that there wasn't one place where people knew they could find information, there wasn't just one calendar. There's lots of little things going on, but there's no one loud megaphone that is blasting information, which in a town this size can be so, so helpful, where people know that, "Oh, if I need to find information about the city or the Chamber or the park rec, library, whatever, it's all going to be on one site. Maybe that's the city website, maybe it's a nonprofit website, maybe it's a radio station, but just this common knowledge of, 'This is where I go to get information. This is going to be legit.'" But Google's great, but sometimes Google doesn't tell us the thing that your neighbor knows that is really the true fact. And making sure that stays updated and easy to find and easy for businesses to provide information to and nonprofits and groups that are doing events in downtown. The second opportunity, we are not parking consultants. We see a lot of different parking things, but for as much as the parking conversation came up, not about, "There's not enough parking, but I don't feel safe about parking," that was the biggest difference to us, was that, "I don't feel safe walking through downtown and crossing the street and I don't feel safe backing out of diagonal parking spots." Especially if you have a lot of kids in downtown. There were a couple of parents who said, "I don't feel okay having my kids bike around because cars don't see them and I know they're not supposed to be on the sidewalks." That I think is something to take into consideration. You also have some good space in your alleyways and the side streets that if you really needed to add additional parking, could be activated. Again, not a parking consultant, but I think it is worth looking into specifically because of the safety issue coming up for pedestrians and drivers. Embracing the idea that it's okay to be a bedroom community. There's nothing wrong with it. People are picking you. They like it here. They want to be living here. Sometimes being a bedroom community gets a bad rap, like, "Oh, well, it's just a bedroom community, we don't need to worry about doing anything there." People are living here, thinking back to that quote about, "We don't want people to just sleep here, we want them to live here." And just embracing that idea as, "This is our economic development plan, people are choosing to live here, what are we going to do with that?" And really thinking about challenges with lots of little efforts. Specifically in the focus groups, folks had grand ideas for what something could be. The empty lot that's, I think it's city-owned, right, in the center of downtown, had grand ideas for like a three-story building with like a restaurant, a co-working space and all of this stuff. It is a multimillion-dollar building that is probably not super realistic, but could there be pop-up farmers markets there a couple weeks every summer? Are there ways that maybe somebody could put up a little stage and have some music out there? Totally. Those are things that are easy to try and not a big loss if it doesn't quite work out because you can try something without having all your eggs in one basket. Thinking about, "What are we going to do first?" Instead of, "Oh my God, we have so much to do." Pick the most important or urgent thing first. Maybe that is your parking, maybe that is the facade of buildings, maybe that is addressing vacancies. It doesn't, it's all important, but it doesn't all have to be an emergency putting out a fire. Picking out one thing, attacking it and then doing the next thing is the most sustainable way to get people to buy in and to see change happen in your downtown district. Ultimately, Kaffin has a really strong base. You have really good bones. You have lots of pieces that are required to succeed. You've got basics covered, so you can start thinking about the bigger stuff now. You don't have to worry about, "Okay, well, where are people going to go get some tile and all?" They can go down to Heidi's, they can go over to the hardware store, it's right there. And really remember too, that you sitting up in these chairs don't have to do it alone. You don't have to hope that the decisions you're voting on and making are enough to work. There is a whole town of people out there who really care and they really want to be involved and they're excited about what downtown could be for them. And tapping into them is good, finding ways to plug them into conversations. Maybe it doesn't always have to be as fancy and formal as a public hearing, but going to where they are and giving them options to plug in can really help move the needle on community buy-in and entrepreneur success. So, yeah, you will be getting all of this data. We have all of the resources that we mentioned in our recommendations that we're able to send on. And also, so this is something that I know we worked through with Robert when he was still here, was as part of this, you are part of the Minnesota Main Street Network, but all you have to do is decide, yes, do we want to still be part of this? No, we don't. We've done all the hard work for you for getting all the stats and data and all that. But this is something that we continually provide resources on for communities, if that's a way to keep engaging. So I can talk about that with Ian too later, but you will get all of this. What questions do you have for me? I dumped a lot of information at you really fast, I know.
So you had the graphs about how people get to downtown?
Yes.
I'm just curious, when did you do the survey? Because if it was in the winter...
It was in June and July.
Oh, so it was midsummer?
It was midsummer. What other questions?
That's a tough one for me to answer. The fact that folks want parallel parking so much, man, that surprised me a little bit.
No, I mean, yeah, that's a, I'm down there every day.
I'm not surprised at all.
Last 18 years, so I see it every day, but the fact that you only had 27 people show up to the meeting doesn't surprise me.
Yeah, but we had great pop-in visits. We talked to hundreds of people at our pop-ins.
I think the fact that you had so much positive communicated to you about Kaffin is actually kind of surprising because I know when we did the long-range planning sessions, we didn't get as much positive feedback about Kaffin.
Yeah, it was always a little bit, I mean, it was very Minnesotan. It was like, "Well, it's dead, but it could be this." You know, like, they had to take it with a grain of salt, but there is still hope there, which I, we don't see everywhere, to be totally honest. But there is still hope there, which I, we don't see everywhere, to be totally honest. Some places, it's dead. Why are you trying?
And as far as downtown goes, your definition of downtown for Cassin, is that pretty much ...
We copied your zoning map.
Okay.
Yeah. We followed the boundaries of your zoning.
Did that count as the hardware store? Did that count as Napa? It counted Plaza 57?
Yep. Yep. It didn't count Plaza 57. That's where like the ice cream shop and stuff is. It did not count that.
I can definitely look into it because now you've got...
I don't think it counts the hardware store either.
No, that's definitely, it's definitely fringe.
Yeah, it doesn't count the hardware store either.
Yeah.
It's walking distance from the town.
Yeah. Adjacent, close enough.
Wow, so the new brewery?
That was not in the boundary. It wasn't quite open yet when I was here, but it was also outside the boundary, which is okay. It's okay. Especially in a town this size, like fringe is almost as good as downtown, but keeping that core identity is important to consider too. Great, well, I'm easily reachable if you have any questions and it has been great working here. I really love Cassin. I'm glad to have been here.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Then Ian, you'll get that to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
We're going to do swearing in from Alfer's.
Oh, yep, we're going to do the swearing in from Alfer off.
That's all right.
No?
Could you have your name? Hi, state your name.
Mr. Ferris.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
That I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of councilperson.
That I will discharge faithfully the duties of counsel, of the office of councilperson.
In the city of Cassin.
In the city of Cassin.
The state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Regalize.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, now we're going to...
Yeah, go right ahead.
On to the mayor's report. We're just going to go through first the appointments for the committees for the council people. Everybody has this in their packets. Pretty much no changes for current members. And then Paul, planning and zoning, keep that good. And then I have, I'm going to add Mayor Potem. Dwayne is gone now. He was the mayor in my place, so I'm going to appoint Dan to be that since he's senior on the council. And then I'd like to appoint John Hanson to planning and zoning. And then Christine Purvis and Janet Sinning to the park board. If there's any questions on that, I can answer them, but they've all filled out the applications and are volunteering for those boards. And then I see, you know, one of the things for the people that serve on planning and zoning and park board, library board, those are all volunteer positions by people in the community, so we appreciate their work on that. If there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Make the motion go through.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And then just a reminder for the council, just as it's a new year, had a situation where when it comes to personnel issues, you know, the day-to-day operations that happened at City Hall or in the city, there was an issue with somebody and the citizen insisted, you know, emailed me and insisted that I took care of the problem because they had contacted me. But I always make sure that we kick anything personnel way back to City Hall because we aren't in City Hall or at the Public Works Department. I'm not going to go tell someone how to plow snow or do the whatever job it's going to be there doing because that's not what we do. You know, we basically direct the city administrator to the day-to-day operations. So I think it worked out fine. Appreciate everybody who helped take care of that. But just a reminder that sometimes people can be pretty forceful. And I remember when I was first elected, you know, you want to take care of it, but then you end up saying something and they think you're going to take care of it. Well, you're really not because you can't. So just a reminder that as, especially for Paul, if you get emails about, take the feedback is great. We appreciate the feedback.
Do I expect a lot of emails?
Define a lot. It depends.
Hopefully not.
So just a reminder, not really, no. I don't have any cards for public forum. Onto public hearing section of the meeting. Number one is the 2023 street improvements. We're going to start with a presentation from, oh, wait a second. I need to wait five minutes for that. I apologize because we started our meeting early for this presentation. The public hearing is notified for six o'clock, so I'm going to wait on that. And we'll go down to after the committee report for the EDA facade improvement program. We'll come back to that at six. Ian, what do you got for us?
So just to report a bit about the facade improvement program. At the January meeting, we did have an application for a facade improvement program. The preferred heating and cooling and dominoes building owned by Caribou Enterprises LLC. The improvements that were included with that application included some improvements to the exterior of the building, replacing some exterior brick with updated siding material. And altogether, the cost of that, those improvements was about forty-one thousand dollars, I believe. And so they requested the full two thousand dollars that was eligible through the facade improvement program, which the EDA did make a recommendation to the council to approve that. So I believe that was included within the consent agenda. So is there any other questions about that program or if anything I can answer those?
No, we'll have to vote on that. It's not in the consent agenda.
So, no. I thought two.
No, that's fine. So any questions for that? I mean, I know the EDA, we talked about it. It meets the criteria of the program. It was one little quirk as it was applied for after the fact. And generally, we would want those before the fact, but as the EDA, since we don't really have a lot of demand for it, as long as it was in the same calendar year, we said fine. We don't want somebody to come back and say, I did a project five years ago. I want to get, you know, it needs to be in the same calendar year, ideally before, but the project that was done fit the criteria. So I think it checked all the boxes. It's just, and the EDA felt comfortable recommending that to council.
Did we get photos of before and after then?
Yes. Yep. Yep, EDA had all that.
Which is why I didn't see it.
Okay, any other questions on that?
It's nice to see that building's gone from a gas station to multiple different buildings, and it's nice to see them keep updating.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Fran. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Why don't we go to old business, the electric bill, Minnesota rate riders.
Sure. Yeah, including your package, you've got some information that we've discussed a few times before. There's actually three documents there. You've got the breakdown of what Excel kind of does, and you can see that they have a number of different rate riders. So this is not an unusual thing to have rate riders on your bill, just so you can kind of see what they do. They do CIP and mercury crusher covering, a couple of different things. One issue we ran to last year was because of the capacity costs that have risen so quickly with the increased demand on the renewable market, as the council and Council Leader Johnson may not be familiar with it, but I think he was at some of those meetings too, so he'd be a little bit familiar with it. Capacity prices rose from fifteen dollars a kilowatt to two hundred and thirty-six dollars last year, and that hit the utility quite hard. In fact, I think we had a round of six hundred thousand dollar loss. Now that was broken down in two years, two calendar years because of the way the capacity auction works. Capacity auction runs or has historically run April to April. This year, actually, FERC has broken it into four quarters, so they're going to be doing quarterly auctions, which I do talk about that in my report a little bit, and I think that's going to be beneficial because obviously, demand is different in different seasons. So the seasonality will probably, I would imagine, that'll bring a better price for us at certain times. You know, obviously, in the summertime, the solar production is higher. So, you know, during the day, capacity shouldn't be an issue. But suffice to say, the council last year did not adjust any of those rates whatsoever. We said, we're going to suck it up. We're not going to do a mid-year rate adjustment, and I think the rate payers appreciate that. But we did talk about bringing a cost rider into effect, which would be if the capacity auction is at a point where we feel we need to recover some of those costs, we could do so. So it wouldn't necessarily mandate those costs, and it wouldn't start until the last capacity auction starts again in April. So basically, you've got it broken down here. What it would mean is that we would calculate, you know, we'd take our capacity costs and it'd be multiplied out. It'd be part of the cost of power. So when you have your utility bill, you have the base rates, which pays for the transmission and pays for the distribution network and some of the salaries, and you have the volume rates. You have the usage rates. So what we do is we have, I think this year, it's like eleven cents a kilowatt or something like that. So what happened is we would take the capacity amounts, we would break it out over the rate payer base, and then that would be added on to the price of power. And so that's something that, as you can see here, is kind of broken down. And the nice thing about it is it just requires a small adjustment during each quarter. We would make a small adjustment to the cost of power. So anyways, I've got this broken out for you. You know, if there's any questions on it, please let me know. I think, you know, I sort of changed it a little bit so it kind of more accurately reflects what it is. It's a capacity cost rider. And at some point, you know, in the next month or so, we'd like to get some, you know, I'd like to have us vote on it so we can add it to our rate structure.
And the nice thing is it's, if the cost is higher, obviously, it's a charge, but if it's lower, there's a credit.
Exactly.
It goes both ways.
Right, exactly. And that is the good thing, is that if there was, no, so Cassin does have some capacity through our nuclear contracts. So if there was at some point where that capacity would be not needed for our city, we'd be able to sell that on the market as well. So it's possible that it would be a credit. Or it's possible that the capacity price would be such that the council says, you know, we don't necessarily need to add the rate rider. If it was a small number, if it came in at a low amount, we might not be as concerned about it. Last year was a year where we saw a huge spike, and I expect that capacity will be at a premium probably for the next four to five years, just because the energy markets themselves are adjusting, you know, with the renewables coming on, coal coming off, natural gas plants, that sort of thing. But it's not something that's intended to be necessary forever, exactly.
So this CCR that's on here, you've got shown on here zero one cent. That's going to be per kilowatt hour?
That's right.
And is that the range you're expecting to be realistic or is it that one cent?
Well, I'm anticipating that we may not be able to cover a hundred percent of the additional capacity.
So is there a maximum that the CCR is going to go to?
Well, I mean, one cent would be the maximum.
Okay.
So that's how we would do it. So instead of paying eleven cents per kilowatt, you pay twelve cents or something like that. It'd be figured into that cost of power.
Which means your electric bills can't variable more than ten percent?
Yeah, I mean, your actual electric bill, I think, you know, you look at it, and I included one in here, I think. If you, you'll take a look at that. This was mine, but I blanked it out, so you can see how much my bill is. But, you know, you could see, for example, in this, they had a certain number of kilowatts used in this month. You know, your kilowatt usage was six hundred and forty kilowatts.
Yep.
So you would have a six-dollar additional, you know, charge. It'd be one penny per kilowatt.
Okay.
That'd be kind of like what you'd be looking at as a maximum.
Sure. And you just said quarterly adjustments, right? So you'd be paying the same CCR for three months, and then the next three months would be a slightly different one?
Potentially, depending on how the capacity rates change. So if the capacity, if the auction goes through and it comes back and there's an adjustment to it, then we could adjust our rate exactly to match.
Okay. Is this going to be lagging at all so that people still have a warning a month before the price goes up?
Yeah, all of our bills are a month lag. So that's kind of how it works. And so one of the things we can do is, on the right-hand side of the bill, you can see where there's an option for notes. I think that's probably what we would do.
So we could put in there, note next month, the CCR is going to be this instead?
Exactly.
Perfect.
Yep. All right, I think we're past six o'clock still.
Okay. Was there any other questions for Tim?
Yeah, if there's any questions, please let me know. Like I said, at some point in time, we'll bring it up, and I just, before April, really, we need to have that in place so we can implement it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now that it's after six o'clock, we'll go back to the public hearing, the 2023 street improvements. First, we'll start with a presentation from the city engineer, and then we'll open the public hearing.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you, everybody, for coming. My name is Brandon Thielbo of WH Cassin Company. I'm the consulting city engineer. So hopefully, you're all here today for the 2023 street improvement project. At a really high level, what are we here for and what are we looking at? Ultimately, the city's considering a street reconstruction project, not a full reconstruction. So essentially, the asphalt pavement in front of your businesses or homes, it's not going to entail a lot of the public utilities, but it's a street maintenance project. And at a real high level, how does this process work? We're at the first of two assessment hearings. The first one tonight is discuss the project, and then ultimately, the city council is going to open up a public hearing, consider your input, and then ultimately decide to go, continue the project through the process, potentially a bidding process, or ultimately kind of can the project and stop work on the project at this meeting. So that will be considered tonight. What ultimately we're looking at, if you want to keep going here? Quick outline, we're going to go over some of the background, some of the project area. We'll talk about the proposed construction, the assessment process, some scheduling items. We'll talk about some preliminary costs. The costs we'll talk about tonight are ultimately preliminary. I put together an engineering report. The intent is to take that engineering report, finalize some plans, and then get some bid numbers back, and then use those bid numbers to ultimately revise the costs that we're proposing to assess the property owners, and then at that second meeting, set those amounts to be assessed. So that's what the second public hearing that we'll have. So the first map here we're going to see shows the project area. You can see we have Second Street southwest. On the west side, just off the sheet there is our water tower. On the east side there is Third Avenue. To the south is Old Fourteen or Veterans Memorial Parkway. All those properties in purple are proposed to be assessed. That shaded area there is the roadway that we're ultimately looking at reconstructing. The bottom half of the sheet there, that is in the northeast part of town, that's Fourth Avenue northeast. And again, Seventh Street to the, it'd be ultimately to the north in the bottom map there, north is to the left on the top map, north is to the up on the sheet there. So it's Fourth Avenue from Seventh Street down to First Street northeast. The second area here, the second sheet here showing the third and fourth areas, is Fourth Avenue from Seventh Street down to Third Street, and then a small section of Eighth Avenue from Third Street, about a half a block to Fourth Street there. So again, purple correlates to properties that are budding, the shaded area that ultimately is a street pavement reconstruction project. Some quick backgrounds on kind of again how we got here. Feasibility report was presented to the city council. That's where we talk about doing a project. This has been in our city's capital improvement plan and our street pavement plan and our street maintenance plan. So when we talked with the city about potentially going for the project, the first step to start formalizing that is the feasibility report. So we presented that to the council in December, and that ultimately triggered all the notices that you got, the notices that were sent to the newspaper and published. Ultimately, what that report said was the pavement was in fair to poor condition. Again, we go and rate the streets throughout the city and prioritize either maintenance or reconstruction, and this was kind of the next area that the council and Public Works, myself and engineering had for the next project. We ultimately have sanitary sewer, water main and storm sewer in good working order. So our utilities generally last longer than our streets do, so we see this a lot of time where we have, the utilities are in good shape. They're somewhat aging, but they're ultimately in good working order. So we have to come in here and do street reconstruction projects. Really, there's no sidewalk throughout the majority of the project. There's just a small amount of sidewalk, but we are not looking at installing sidewalk as part of the project. The next slide here, we'll look at proposed construction. Again, sticking with the theme, this is a street reconstruction project. So we have reconstruction of the roadway. Our reclaim, which is basically grind up the existing blacktop pavement and the rock underneath the pavement, grind that up, remove some of that ground up material, and ultimately compact it back down, and then provide four inches of new混凝土 pavement on top of that reclaimed pavement and base, replace deteriorated sections of curb and gutter. Our intent is not to replace a lot of curb and gutter, but if there is some settlement or some poorer conditions of curb and gutter, that would be included in the project. or some poorer conditions of curb and gutter, that would be included in the project. No new sidewalk to be constructed that was laid out in the feasibility report. Whenever we do street projects, we have to adjust the sanitary sewer manholes and gate valves. Those are ultimately the access points to our sanitary sewer system and the gate valves that shut down our water system. So those need to be adjusted as part of the project. And then we're going to adjust storm sewer catch basins and manholes throughout the project, so there'll also be some curb and gutter replacements at those storm catch basins, those are always kind of a, a pain in Public Works' project, because they ultimately kind of settle there. Again, no additional storm sewer facilities throughout the project, we haven't seen a lot of flooding in these areas, and that's something that Public Works didn't really see as a need. So, again, going back to the two steps in the process, there's ultimately two assessment hearings. We're at the first one tonight, the hearing on the improvements, and then we'll have the second one. So that, this next slide here is going to lay out that process. The first two items, again, have been completed. The council determined a need, we conducted the engineering study. The next three are what we're doing tonight, we're going to be holding a hearing on the improvements, to gather some input. The city's council is going to consider that and decide whether to proceed with the project or not, via ultimately ordering the improvements. The next step in the assessment process, if it moves forward tonight, we ultimately publicly bid it. Again, the project stage right now is just an engineering estimate, we would ultimately bid that if we move forward to contractors. We would know the bid price, which is ultimately going to shore up our cost, or we'll have a better idea of the cost of the project, and then we will in turn reapply that to the properties, depending on what the council decides to do after the project is bid. And then we will have the final assessment amount that we would send to you all, and then we'll have a dollar amount associated with that. And then at that final assessment hearing, the city will have, again, a public hearing. The amounts at that point cannot go up, they could potentially go down, and you as a public will have input on the assessments that are being proposed against your property. We'll have some more information, and we'll be required to send you some more information. We'll get to that point, so you all receive it in the mail, we'll put it in the newspaper. And then if we're ultimately moving forward, we are going to construct a project likely this year. So the current schedule, again, the first two are what we're here tonight, having the hearing, and the council's going to consider ordering the improvements, which is a step in the assessment policy. In your calendars, tentatively put in March 8th, is when we're looking at having the final assessment hearing, likely here at City Hall. And then again, if we're moving forward at that point, we're going to be likely awarding a project at that March 8th meeting, if we're continuing down that schedule. And then we will be constructing in the spring, and we currently have an October 1st completion date, with the idea that we give the contractor a fair amount of time to construct the improvements, knowing that it's not going to take all summer, and it's not going to have a terrible impact on the properties, because we're not digging up utilities in front of your house, it's going to be, grind up the pavement, we can leave the pavement in place, you can get into your houses, and get into your driveways, other than maybe when they're paving it for a day or two. So it's not real impactful, we are going to leave that schedule open, knowing that throughout the summer, you're going to generally have access to your homes. Preliminary cost, the two areas, or four areas we showed there, ultimately have a cost of about a million dollars. Again, that's my engineering number that we have, we like to be on the high side, but blacktop paving has been kind of all over the place with gas prices and oil prices, so hopefully, it signals trending down. So that is a preliminary number that we put together as part of that feasibility report. Per-city policy, the city has a special assessment policy. As part of that policy, 30% of total project cost is to be assessed to the adjacent property owners that are benefiting from the property, so 30% of a million dollars is about 306,000 there. And then the assessment methods, there's different ways to ultimately assess that back to the benefiting property owners. What the city's done in past projects and proposing to do as part of this project, is what they call the residential equivalent unit. So ultimately, when we look at assessing the amount, there's 120 residential equivalent So when we ultimately apply the 300,000, or 306,000 over the 120 residential equivalent units, you can see a residential equivalent unit's about $2,500. Think of that, if that's a typical single-family home with a typical yard, you may have slightly different frontages, but generally, if a house is a house is a house, $2,500 and some change there is one RU. We have some corner lots, so if the road is being constructed on one of your corners, that would be a half RU with the idea or concept that if we come on the other side of the road and do an improvement, then there would be another half at a later time, or a previous time. And then if you are a corner lot that has work on both sides, that would be one RU. So corner lots are kind of being hit double by having additional frontage. Now, with that said, there is some larger lots, where ultimately, two homes could be built, so that would be a larger frontage, larger lots, those are currently proposed to be one and a half RU, so you can see it's about $3,800. And then we have some other larger lots that we'll look at here in a second, that ultimately, in a redevelopment situation, we kind of look at it, well, how many houses could you fit on there, and what's the equitable amount that these larger lots should be paying, because they ultimately have more streets in front of their houses? And then you see the three RU's, they're about $7,600. Next slide here, we're looking at a map. Again, this will look familiar, we just looked at it earlier, you can see, anything that's not a one RU is labeled on there, so you can see like 07 there, that's one and a half RU, 14 is one and a half, 16 is currently three RU, and then on the south side of Second Street Southwest, 34 and 35 is three RU's. See some pretty sizable lots there. So again, if you correlate how many RU's you are, we'd go back to that table that we just had in the previous slide. You can see also, we have some that are labeled corner lots, just noting that those properties on the end there, one up along the far west side, the left-hand side of the sheet there, off of Seventh Avenue, is a corner lot, along with the east side, 19 and 36 off of Third Avenue, on the top area there. And then similarly, on the south side, those are all one RU's, except for the, be it a southeast property there, property number 86, that's Fourth Avenue and First Street Southeast, you can see it's a pretty sizable lot, so that has been assigned one and a half RU's. And then the next portion of the project, or the next slide here will show the other portion of the project, very similar there, one RU for all those houses, thinking that the concept, how to apply this equitably, is that all those houses are generally the same, they're all the same size, we have some corner lots there, that would be half if the shaded area and the work proposed is only half the lot. So with that said, that's the, just the presentation night, we do have a public hearing, so we're going to open that up. Happy to answer any questions, or if the council has any questions before we open the public hearing, happy to do that, too.
Any questions before, before we open the public hearing? Paul. Okay. We'll open the public hearing regarding the 2023 Street Improvements. If you have anything you want to say, just come on up to the microphone, state your name and address, and raise your input.
Hi, everybody. I'm Bruce Boozoff, 204 Fourth Avenue Northeast. I just have a couple things, I understand that it does need blacktop and everything, but it's not fixed in the underground, you know, the city sewer floods all the time. We've had backup sewer, and twice, we've had so that our ba, we put a backflow valve in, that you can't use your bathroom, shower, or anything, because once it starts coming out of the manhole in front of us, we shut everything down, so otherwise, we'd flood ourselves. So I'm just curious why we're spending money blacktopping, brand-new blacktop over stuff that's not working.
Yeah, so I kind of mentioned earlier that the utilities generally are in, last longer than the asphalt, and as you probably know, the asphalt's are really tough shape. So we are also, you're probably well aware of the I&amp;I project that we've been doing, we went into all the houses, looked at the sun pumps and whatnot. Yep. So that is how we're kind of attacking, maybe in your neighborhood, and the city as a general to us, how we're attacking getting that raining groundwater out of our sanitary sewer system. So we've kind of been battling or going after, if you will, the private side on your guys' private properties and homes. We just had a meeting, last council meeting, we looked at some of the city side, to make some improvements on our infrastructure, to ultimately, on our public side, again, to reduce the amount of raining groundwater that's getting into the sanitary sewer. So in addition to that, the, some of the, probably the improvements that we're going to see in some of the sanitary sewer itself, is going to be across the city, but it's also going to be some other areas that probably are even more impactful than, than what we probably experienced in the neighborhoods that are part of this project. So it's kind of a little bit of a balancing act, right? Like, we can't come in and replace all the sanitary sewers, we wouldn't get anywhere, we probably would never get to your neighborhood in the timeline that the road needs to be ultimately fixed, so that's what we balance on our capital improvement planning. It's kind of a long-winded answer of, is, is the, is, are we ever going to get to the sanitary sewer before we fix it, before we need to get to the road?
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
I mean, it blows the mantles off in front of our house, when it does it.
On the sanitary sewer or the storm sewer?
Both. We see, when it shoots it out, then, you know, we shut down using water in our house, because it comes against our backflow valve, which we put in to, to save it, you know, from the first time. But I just, that's all, I just really, really don't understand why we're fixing the street and not going all the way, you know?
Yeah, because it happened since 2019, with the, well, I mean, I have-
I don't have the news, Chris, I really don't.
Yeah, okay. Well, no, that'd be something we should, you know, as we're looking at the I&amp;I projects, all that stuff.
I mean, I'm not excited to spend a lot of money, but I'm just curious when we cover something up.
Right. That's a good point.
You know, I see the, see the guys down there pumping the manholes all the time when we get heavy rain, and that's, this ain't going to change. Just, by putting blacktop on, it's not going to help.
No, I, I don't disagree. But in that area, we've, we've done a couple things, going back to some of the things that we looked at from the city side of, kind of our big efforts after the 2019 flooding that we, we just talked about the last council meeting, was having a better response, or a quicker response to some of that, pumping down the sanitary sewer manholes. So that's some of the things we worked on, and again, we're working on sealing up not only the private side, your sump pumps and foundation drains draining into the sanitary sewer, but the city side. We got a lining project coming up, we're replacing some manholes. We've looked at the trunk line, that ultimately, your subdivision area drains down to First, which ultimately drains to the trunk line that runs down to Maston Creek, probably familiar with the old treatment plant location down. We're actually looking at upsizing that line, helping provide some additional capacity to help pull that sewer out of your neighborhood. So I think we're, we're attacking the problem, I don't know that replacing the sanitary sewer in your street's probably not going to help, because it all backs up off the sewer line that runs up Maston Creek. And we're also going to replace sanitary sewer castings that were flooded in 19, if you were familiar with that, you know, a lot of those were under water, there were open pickholes, we had one casting broke off, and quite frankly, replacing your sanitary sewer in front of your house, probably isn't going to fix that. So we're attacking that sewer problem in other areas to get some additional capacity, but also get the ground and rainwater that comes from your sump pumps and our leaking mains, out of the mains, so it's not surcharging our system.
Well, if it's a storm in front of our place off in the street, the storm's not big enough either.
Yep, no, I don't, no disagree, you know?
So I mean, it's a, both, they're both a double whammy there, they're both, neither one of them are working right now.
So we did install, I'm not sure that it would necessarily help your neighborhood, but we did install a, a big storm sewer line from the fire station, behind between the railroad houses, we turned those houses on First, and we tied in some of that storm sewer, that ultimately is likely backing up kind of all of First, so we're getting that storm sewer in that bigger pipe, and then ultimately to Maston Creek a little bit sooner. Now, if that goes up kind of to your neighborhood, I'd have to look at that a little closer, but we're, we're putting some things in place to, to make that drain a little bit better through there, so.
And I know it's great, the city, you know, is pushing everybody in our area to put the backflow valves in, which we all have, but if everybody does a backflow valve, and the sewer isn't working, you're just moving it up the hill to other people.
I disagree.
I know, so you're just moving it to other people.
And I, I will say, the other thing we have going on, I don't know how much you follow the news, we have been chasing after some bonding bill requests, to put a flood control structure upstream of Maston Creek, specifically before it goes underneath Highway 14, kind of going west, southwest out of town. The idea there is that we have a large flood control structure, you probably seen around Rochester, to choke off some of that flow in the larger rain events, to ultimately reduce the flood elevation that runs through town, about two feet, and it has a pretty big impact when we have our sanitary sewer lines that generally follow the creek, that are ultimately flooding. So if we lower that flood elevation, our thoughts are, we're going to protect our sanitary sewer system from surcharging along the creek, and then hopefully perpetuating itself and backing up into your, your neighborhood, so.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it.
So I think the councils, you know, we've spent a lot of the citizens' money to, you know, chase this down, so it was something that happened after 2019, when the mayor and I were in the council, we're ultimately tasked to, to come up with some solutions. I think they've been pretty aggressive, but now we got some more projects that we're looking at doing next year even, so.
Okay. And just the other thing would be is the reclaiming and blacktopping, that's great, but when they go in and do reclaiming, don't let them waste so long to come back in and blacktop, because it's a mess.
Yep, it can be if it gets wet, absolutely.
They, they come in and always kind of grind it, and they wait three months. I see it all the time. So if we could push that, I'd appreciate it.
Yep.
Thanks, Bruce.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Bernie Diller, 107 Third Avenue Southwest. Question on the assessments, how do you assess that? Is that spread out over a period of time? Is that a interest loan, is it going to be taxes? First time touring this process, so I just, I'm not sure of it.
Yep, so the policy, I don't have it right here in front of me, but the policy we've followed in the past is, I mean, people are welcome to pay it if they want to, but we put it on for 15 years.
Yeah, it's spread up to over 15 years, over your, it'd be assessed to your property taxes if you chose not to prepay. You can prepay at certain times if you wanted to, like, if you wanted to pay a quarter upfront, and then, you know, pay in larger amounts, the county would, would take those payments. And typically, what happens is that the, the council will issue a bond, so it'll be, it'll be a bonded project.
Sure.
And at the day when they do that, they take a look at the prime rate of the interest, and then, whatever that interest rate, they would, they would add a little extra to that, and then that's the rate that's put on to, to the assessments. So basically, you would have an interest payment due as part of that the longer it goes.
So it would automatically be put on your taxes and-
That's right, yes.
-a reduction in your taxes.
Correct.
Okay. So I have?
Thank you.
Yep, just one second.
Bernie, if you don't mind, I'll add one item to that, regarding the second phase of the second assessment hearing, you will be getting all that information in like a package, just like you got a notice today. There'll be some more information, they're explaining interest rate, term, and whatnot, that's ultimately being proposed by the council, that they'll decide at that next public hearing, and then ultimately, likely finalize that if, if the project's moving forward.
So, follow-up question, I'm just thinking of it right now, so curb and gutter, how much of that do you anticipate needing to be replaced on Second Street Southwest?
I don't know the exact amount, but generally, I know there's a couple spots on Second Street Southwest that's been hit probably pretty hard by the plows, or in some settlement areas in there. And then the catch basins, actually, those are recently redone. So not a lot, I would say, maybe, you know, 5% would be a general number. Again, with, you know, maybe to Bruce's point, we start getting into doing curb and gutter, and now we're, you know, talking about doing a lot bigger projects, so our, our idea is to do as little as possible if we have drainage issues, or if there's a settlement in that curb and gutter, or if it's in really tough shape, then we would be likely replacing that.
There is one spot on Second Street where it's tended to settle over the, over the years.
Is that near your house, or?
Uh, it's, it's kind of past the apartment, just a little bit, kind of right across from the storage unit.
Yeah.
Spot there. And then, I guess while I have the floor, on Third Avenue Southwest, to the, right at the railroad tracks, right to the north of that, fixed that up here a year, maybe two ago.
Yep.
But Lake Cassin still exists on warm weather, and we catch walleyes out of there. So I'm wondering, is there any plan to mitigate that?
I would say no, and it's funny you mention that, because one of our employees that lives in town said the same thing, like, she was working on the project, she goes, "Go up there and get it by the railroad," so, she's, you guys are the only ones that are looking at it, so even our own staff.
I mean, it's, it's a quick fix, it's about, you know, half an hour of just running that water off of there.
Um, so we have some right-of-way issues there with the railroad there, so it's a little bit, it's not quite as easy to solve with, like, a storm sewer system to run it somewhere, we're, we're kind of lacking on the right-of-way, because we have looked at it from Public Works a couple years ago before they paved it, so. No, we don't, we haven't, I mean, it's on our radar, we just haven't, you know, sprung a project to do anything yet, so.
Okay. Do you have a in with the railroad? They're not the greatest.
I wave every time they go by.
Okay.
They usually let me know they're going by, too.
Okay, yeah. I bet they do, thanks, Bernie.
They do.
Anyone else?
I'm Clark Holmes, live at 210 Fourth Avenue Northeast. And most of my concerns or questions have already been addressed with the first question. But just knowing that on Fourth Street there, you know, we've had sewer four times in our basement back up, even with a backflow valve, those don't always work either, as we found out unfortunately. So I guess I'm more, my question is more about, do we have actual information about the condition of the sewer line that goes Fourth Avenue Northeast? Do we actually have like data that shows, is it sized appropriately? Is it in good condition? Is it?
Yeah, so I'll go back to the efforts that started after the flooding in 2019. And really, the council at that time tasked us as the city engineers to say, let's look at this, let's try to really get some improvements here to ultimately flood less frequency, right? Because you mentioned in the property owners law on First Avenue, so the same thing, it's backed up four times in the last fifteen years, unacceptable. Let's find a good solution. So that kind of came to a head at the last council meeting. We presented a report that ultimately, we went in there, looked at every sanitary sewer manhole, we looked at the manholes, seen whether there's some deficiencies, if they're in a flood plain and they have open pick holes, let's look at replacing them. We looked at all the sanitary sewers. We had a subcontractor come in and televise every sanitary sewer. So we know the condition of the sanitary sewer, every line in town. And then lastly, the part of the project I think is going to be the most impactful, we looked at our trunk line that goes from our treatment plant by the bridge on Sixteenth Streets for the current treatment plant, follows the river up to the railroad truss there where the old treatment plant was, that's just off of First Avenue. We looked at the capacity of that line. And the conclusion was, or what that means is that it's under capacity when it rains, right? In 2019 it was under capacity, which in turn, that being under capacity kind of shoots the sewer up all the side streets, if you will, and then backing up into houses. So the conclusion of our report was kind of fight I and I from three levels. The private side, some pumps that we've done. The public side, help sealing our sanitary sewer up because if that flooded nineteen, if none of that water gets in our sanitary sewer, we're fine, right? But that doesn't happen. And then how do we come up with a project to that? So we're in process of utilizing, engaging or starting that project for this construction season to start the first phase of that. And then lastly, Mastin Creek trunk line, we're calling it a trunk line, to the end of First Street there kind of as it turns, to get some more capacity in that line. So that has been a project of the third phase of that I and I work that we have looked at and we haven't made a decision on when we'd be doing that project to ultimately have that capacity. Because ultimately, if it doesn't rain, we don't need it, right? We all know it rained significantly nineteen and previously. So when does the council kind of pull that trigger on that project? Obviously, it's a pretty big project, right? So they got new sanitary sewer line from the treatment plant all the way back into town, if you will. I think it was like three billion dollars we were looking at. So that is something that the city's looking at moving forward and putting into their, they have it in their current rate projection on sanitary sewer, your rates that you pay every day. So that ultimately has been in there. It's just a matter of when do we ultimately construct that project. I think the council's consensus was looking at it in the near future, the next few years. I think we had it 2025 or 2027. And I think that is ultimately going to be the project that's really going to have a significant impact on the frequency of the sanitary sewer backing up. That's going to provide the capacity so First can continue to drain out along that trunk line because it's kind of a bottleneck where multiple lines come together. So I think adding that capacity is going to help. And then I think the work that we've done on the private side and going to start on the public side has helped. The treatment plant has actually, has almost had historic, you know, recent time lows of flow, albeit it's been pretty dry this fall obviously, but. So we're starting to see some of the impacts of the work that we've done and the improvements that we've done. So we're going to continue that as my goal and direction from the council. So to answer the question, there's a lot of things going on in the sanitary sewer, so.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I know it's not, it's a hard problem to solve, but if I heard you correct, you said you have actual video footage of all the lines?
Yep.
So you have confidence that the line on Fourth Avenue Northeast is properly sized?
Yep, so we did the evaluation, last council meeting, we presented the evaluation of that evaluation. We had recommendations to make improvements on the sanitary sewer system. And I'd have to look back on what Fourth Avenue had, but we are incorporating those improvements into our street jobs to, you know, Bruce's point. We don't want to put new pavement on substandard infrastructure that we really have some concerns about. So as part of our project, we have some sanitary sewer lining, which if you have an old clay line that's leaky in the street, we are actually proposing to do some lining next year. So that may happen, but there was not a proposed improvement to replace us. It was like in good enough shape that either it was to remain the way it was or it would be lined. And to that point, even on Second Street, there's a, we call a spot repair, a spot that's got a bad spot where there's a sewer connection coming in and we're actually going to replace it before we put the pavement on. So we are looking at our street needs and our sewer and water needs to ultimately come to a project that we're not putting new pavement on, you know, the worst sewer in town or something that we think is going to be redone in the next fifteen years. We have done that.
Yeah, that's good. It's good to have that information because it seems like Fourth Street in particular seems to be kind of a recurring problem area. So the question in our neighborhood is always, you know, is that trunk or that properly sized? Is it in decent condition? So having that data, it does help ease the worries a little bit, I guess.
Yeah, I would say the main issue out there, why it again perpetuates up into town is that trunk line along the creek off of First Avenue. What we've shown ultimately is if we increase that capacity, the sewer will keep flowing and it will be backing up into town into multiple houses. So that's our long-term goal or short-term goal.
And a lot of the short-term stuff was accomplished with, the river basically flowed into the sewer pipes and knocked casting off when the river roared away the bank and got to the pipe and knocked that whole manhole or casting off. So the river during that flood event for many hours was actually flowing into the sewer system and the river had a lot more force than the sewer leaving, so it just kept going up. So that's been resolved already, so.
No, I just want to close with, I do appreciate everything, the steps that have been taken. It's nice knowing that you've got a plan and that you have identified things. You know, obviously you didn't rip and everything up and start over, that's not feasible, so do appreciate that. Appreciate the information of what the conditions are, so thank you.
Thanks Clark.
GM Borgstrom Durst, 401 Third Avenue Northwest. Although we own property on Second Street Southwest. And I guess my question is, how did we get a combination of this little short stretch of Second Street Southwest with all the larger property northeast? Because I'm thinking that the street past Hy-Vee and the street to the east of that, both of those definitely need attention. Ours was done Fourth Street two years ago. So I'm thinking, why was this not held off until closer?
I believe because the First and Second Avenue Northwest is earmarked as the next total reconstruction like Third, Fourth and Fifth was, like Meadow Avenue was, with the utilities, the whole ball wax. Where these ones here just need the surface versus the utilities. And budget wise, we can't fit First and Second in there for the next five or six years by the size of the project. So I, you can fill more on that, but I think First and Second is on for 2030 or '31, somewhere in the long range plan. But that's a whole reconstruct. So to Bruce's point at the beginning too, we wouldn't want to redo the street there and then in six or seven years tear the whole thing up and replace all the infrastructure where this stuff here has at least a fifteen year life, we believe, under the ground or longer if it's lined or repaired here too, so.
So you think Second Street Southwest has a fifteen year life underneath?
Correct.
Yep.
But did you say you were going to repair something with the sewer there?
Yep, so Second Street Southwest, we have a spot repair because there's one small section of the main where a service comes in that it's kind of all broke apart. So before we put this pavement on as part of this project, we're going to dig down on that sanitary sewer, fix that and then get that up in good working order before we pave it.
Okay.
In addition to that, again, part of that I and I, when we looked at every sewer main in the entire city, we are proposing to line some of the sanitary sewer on Second Street. It's not in that bad a shape that we need to go in there and tear it all out. If we had some water main breaks, it might be a little bit different conversation. We don't experience a lot of water main breaks in that area too, so.
Is there curb and gutter repair that need to be done on Second Street Southwest?
Uh, there's going to just be some spot replacement if there's some settlements, like a service settlement where water isn't drained real well. We do have some provisions and costs in there to replace some curb spots, some curbs in some spots, yep.
Is there much curb and gutter repair on the northeast?
Northeast? No, it's generally about the same, five percent basins are.
Okay.
Thanks Janice.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and we'll close the public hearing.
I have one more thing.
Yes, sir.
To Janice's point, I didn't say this, the sewer spot repair on Second Street is not proposed to be assessed, so it's not, I think maybe what Janice was alluding to is it the same type of construction? I would say yes, it was. And then that is not proposed to be assessed, so it's not an added cost that that portion of the project.
The spot, the sewer repair is part of our I and I.
Correct, yep. So we're not proposing to assess that cost, so.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions from council for Brandon or anybody?
Yeah, I'd just like some clarification on this vote versus the one in the assessment. What are the options at the assessment one? Because it says here that per city policy, we have to assess thirty percent. So what's the point of the next one?
We'll have the numbers.
And you could go lower. You couldn't go higher.
Right, but we have to do a minimum of thirty percent according to this, right?
No. Go ahead, Brandon.
Yeah, so currently now, you have an engineering estimate, put together an engineering cost estimate. So if we proceed with the project, we're going to send it out to bids. We're going to get those bids back and then we'll know what the project costs, well, unless we have like change orders or cost, but know a lot better than an engineering firm putting together a cost estimate based on past prices. So we'll have a bid that'll help lock in that number and then we'll use that to reestablish the amount to be assessed. Still at thirty percent, if we leave it there, then we're going to set that amount based on your assessment policy, assuming it's thirty percent, one hundred and twenty REUs unless directed otherwise. We'll put that together, we'll send all the property owners notices again, we'll put it in the newspaper. We'll be right back here in whatever that date was, in March. And then considering to finalize the assessments based on the comments from the citizens. Does that answer the question?
So at the assessment hearing, assuming we vote against it, what does that mean?
A vote assessing the property owners?
Yeah. Would that mean that there would be no assessment or would that mean that we'd have to give new numbers?
So if you voted no to not assess, you know, in that hypothetical situation, what we currently have scheduled a backup is to have the assessment hearing, send out the notices to the property owners, have that assessment hearing, and you'll have to vote on that assessment hearing and then likely at the same time or shortly thereafter, at the same meeting, we will vote on entering a new contract with the contractor. So if you decided you didn't want to do the project at all at the next meeting when we have the bids in hand, you could not approve the assessment role, the assessment amounts and the terms, and then not approve the construction project and the project doesn't move forward.
So tonight we're deciding whether to go to the next step and get actual numbers in bids?
Correct.
So we can get the actual numbers. It's just the state required steps. You got to have this hearing, which we don't really know everything until the next one, until we get the numbers back, so.
All right. Yep. And I will, just to add to Paul's, Councilor Johnson's point, forfeit vote on approving to move forward with that is required per state statute, so.
Good question. Anything else? Dan, anything?
I've nothing.
Oh, okay. So what we're going to do is have a resolution ordering the improvements to go out to bid to get the numbers back for the next step of the process. Unfortunately, these are never fun conversations because assessing anything is never the fun part of the job, but it's how things get paid for in the city. You know, and I always, I questioned years ago when I had my nineteen thousand dollar assessment on Main Street, you know, that, the validity of that, you know, and at the time, but since learning a little more and doing that, you know, we don't assess, you know, a homeowner, when they build a new home in town pays one hundred percent of the improvements to their property, sewer, water, storm, all the improvements, curb, gutters, street, sidewalk, the whole thing, a hundred percent. We don't ask taxpayers to subsidize building or development in the city whatsoever. So nobody pays for that except for the actual homeowner. If I happen to live in my home for fifty years and I have to redo the road in front of my house and I get assessed thirty percent of the project because it benefits my property, I pay thirty percent or the two or three thousand dollars, wherever this is, that's just my luck of living there when the road needed to be replaced. And we're not asking the homeowner to pay a hundred percent of it like we do a new homeowner and we're not asking the taxpayers to pay a hundred percent of it. So just, it's an uncomfortable situation for everybody. Nobody likes it. Nobody likes to be assessed and let me tell you, nobody likes to do the assessing either. It's a very uncomfortable part of the position that I've, it's the third time we've had to do it now. So I always thank and blame my engineer, so I just like that. But so that's where we're at there. We need to do the, take a vote on the resolution ordering the improvements to go to the next step. All in favor of doing that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so it's five of five. All right. Okay, and I thank everybody for coming. If you don't want to stick around for us, meaning you certainly don't have to, so. But you're welcome to. Anytime you want to stop by for these exciting meetings, please do. We did the G1.
Yeah, we'll jump up to the number two, which is the on sale intoxicating hearing. So including your package, you have, we have a public hearing for an on sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license. That would be E2. And you have the information included in there. This is for some folks who are going to be opening a restaurant. You got to hear tonight the presentation for ethos about desire for a restaurant and I was like, wow, look at that, the city delivers the same night, you know, what a, what great government we've got. But include your package, you've got their application. We did have a review of their record and they have been operating a business, a similar business in a different community in our area and they haven't had any issues based on what the police department's found there. And the operator, Tammy D., has not had any issues. There were a couple of things that we did find with the other operator, but they weren't anything that would bring us to feel that they wouldn't be issued this license. So at this time, we as staff would recommend issuing the liquor license. So then we'll have a public hearing and if there's any comments, we'll take those, but.
Okay, any questions from council first?
Where exactly is this? It says it's on West Main.
Where the Maye, Miss Place Magnolia was, restaurant was?
Okay.
Yeah.
So basically it's Tilly's from Oronoco, Tammy who lives here in town, she's moving her business from there to here.
Oh, she's moving it? She's not just having a second one?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Do we need to eventually have that discussion again about the Sunday times for selling of liquor? We know we had that conversation about the Legion, having those special Sunday events.
We approved that.
We did approve that, okay.
Yeah. We talked about it a couple times.
Yeah, that was approved.
Thanks, sorry.
Nope, that's fine. Okay, so we'll open up the public hearing regarding the intoxicating and Sunday liquor license for Tammy's place on Main Street. If anybody has anything they'd like to say or comments, please come forth.
Can I ask, how many liquor licenses do we have in Casson?
I think there's five. But they're not all the same. Some are on sale and some are off sale. So anyways, I can check on that for you, Janice, and get you, I can have Jan take a look at it.
Honestly, Dad, like, there is ten available or we have, we just have add as it comes in.
Yeah, no, actually there's a limit. I think the limit is five. So I think we're at our limit now because I know that when Jan, our deputy clerk, took this, she had made sure to reserve a spot because we were indicated earlier this fall that this business was coming and they had said, we really like to get in. And so at that time, she sort of slotted them into that last spot.
Yeah, because there's five and then we could increase that at some point if we wanted to, but per policy now it's five and basically they're taking the place of, because Magnolia had a liquor license as well, so.
Is this hard liquor?
Bull, yeah. Liquor beer, yep.
With that, so we've got events, we've got the Legion, we have Peets, we have the restaurant at East B Daniels.
El Patron, maybe six.
And we have the brewery, that's five already, so this will be.
What about the?
I'll check. I can check.
What about the liquor store? Does that not need a license because it's city operated?
They don't do on sale. They don't do on sale.
You can't drink while you're there.
I don't understand.
So on sale is liquor be?
Off sale means you can buy it there, take it home. On sale, you can have it on the premises.
So this is on sale only?
Correct, yeah. On sale only.
These are the ones that are limited?
Yeah.
Correct.
I'll check into that, Janice, and I'll have Jan email you.
Okay.
But there's a limit, water the limit.
Yeah, so this is only for drinking at the establishment?
At the establishment, correct.
And there's a limit of five?
Six, I think, yeah. I'll check on that though. It's either five or six. And I know Jan, she had that conversation with us.
I'm just wondering what the limit's for. Do we got a?
It's just been there? We can increase it if we want to.
I'll, I'll check on that, though. It's either five or six, and I know Jan, she had that conversation with us.
I'm just wondering what the limit's for, do we gotta?
It's just been there, we can, we can increase it if we want to.
I think all your cities have.
Yeah, every city has it. I'm not sure why.
Not sure what the point is. I understand not having a whole bunch where you can take it home, but.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, it's just been there forever, and I think.
Also, police department.
Yeah, I think if, if somebody came to town and wanted to open up a, whatever, restaurant, bar, whatever, we'd consider that and change it. So it can be changed.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, good question, Janice. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions on that license before we take a vote?
See a new business come in.
I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Stand up a second. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, the tax abatement and resolution.
Sure, including your package, you've got a, an item which was recommended by the EDA. This is for a property on the north side of Casson that, yeah, we have the, just north of Dollar General, so council's familiar with the project that Mr. Shude has sort of pushed forward, and this information was brought to you. Ian, if you want to highlight anything else you've got with that?
Yeah, so I'll just say specifically that the tax abatement that was proposed by the EDA, and the EDA is recommending, is a nine-year program, although it's a stepped program where the amount abated would change from year to year. For the first five years, it would be a hundred percent of the city's portion of tax, and then years six and seven would be fifty percent, and then years eight and nine, it would be twenty-five percent. Altogether, that would total approximately a hundred and two thousand. And actually, in the resolution, it does put that limit in there specifically, so that way, you know, it doesn't, it wouldn't go over.
And it's a pay-as-you-go abatement as well, so the city isn't taking any financial risk. It's based on the taxes paid by the new business that that would be recouped by them during their calendar year.
Alright, and this helps get infrastructure built, and the business is bringing, what'd they say, twenty-four to twenty-eight jobs to create that, which goes hand in hand with our, you know, we'll talk about it here soon, but we've got one fifty-unit apartment complex being built. Another one that we'll talk about in a minute, got their tax credits from the state, so they're gonna go ahead with a forty-some unit development, so when, you know, we have folks that are renting these apartments, it's nice to have other jobs for them to have in town, so that's what makes a project like this worthwhile. And we get the infrastructure built, otherwise, we have to pay a hundred percent of that infrastructure to get it built, and we just don't do that or have the money to do that, so.
We'd open a public hearing for this as well, though.
So any questions, council first before we open the public hearing?
So is an abatement, is that deferred taxes or forgiven taxes?
Well, so it's sort of like forgiving taxes. The way it would work is that during the calendar year of the business, they'll have a valuation, the county will say your value, your property's valued at X, just like your home is, and the percentage of the taxes the city has, they're all paid at the end of the year of the portion. We're saying that the city will give back to that business the amount that they paid to us.
Okay, that's the way I thought it was, so it just, the tax abatement doesn't seem fair to me, like, because you're giving, you're essentially making the taxpayers pay for it, for that hundred grand, right?
Well, no, we'd be taking the, the new taxes that are being paid on the property and using those for the, for the, I mean, that's what we're paying back to them.
Right, so we lose that money, and the taxpayers have to make up the difference in the budget.
We didn't have it in the first place.
We didn't have it before. We, we only had, say.
It's getting taxed right now, right?
Just, but we still get that amount. We get whatever the base amount is now.
So what, what happens if they go out of business in three years? We just lost all that tax money?
Well, the owner of the property will continue to pay. A good example would be the ShopCo building, and there are particular issues that some folks will remember over the years, but the bank took ownership of that property and was continuing, I mean, had to continue to pay the property taxes.
Oh, so the bank foreclosed on it and then paid the same property taxes?
That's right.
But were they, was it still an abatement when they were doing that? Or was the abatement go away?
That's in a TIF district, so it's a little bit different, but the principle is the same.
Yeah, so if the, if the property owner changes hands, they, they lose the abatement or not?
Yeah, that'd be how it would work if it was, if it was to trade hands. I mean, now, a new owner might be able to request, they would come to a, to the city council and say, I'd like to continue to fulfill this contract that we've made, that's something they could ask us for, but it certainly isn't a guarantee.
So do we give every business abatements, or only new small businesses? I mean, QuickTrip's gonna be just down the road, do they get an abatement?
They haven't requested.
They haven't requested one. Most know with the city, yeah, it's a good question, I'm with you on that, too. If, if it wouldn't be for the new infrastructure being built in this area, to me, it wouldn't even be considered for an abatement.
Which infrastructure is that?
Sewer, water, the whole ball, X, that we would have to put in.
So we're gonna, we're gonna make them pay for that infrastructure, and in exchange, we're giving them an abatement, an abatement?
Correct, partial, part of their cost back for them building it, versus us having to put a hundred percent of the bill.
Yeah, a hundred thousand doesn't seem like it's gonna cover the infrastructure, so ultimately, they're gonna pay more, right?
Yeah, they're anticipating, I think, two hundred and six thousand was their.
No, a hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Hundred and ninety-two, okay, maybe I was looking at a different number, but yeah, it's about two hundred thousand.
For them building it, we're baiting back some of the taxes for a few years like this, for us not to have to put the whole bill to get them to come in and basically put that in for the development in the area, and that's also gonna open up development to the rest of that, to the west of that.
And as we add those businesses, then you're, you're finding people to move into, to work there, and then they're paying taxes. So it, it balances, we have a, was it?
I would agree, I would agree with you, maybe for some, some other business, but this is a family dollar, dollar store? That's gonna be directly across the street from Dollar General?
They're still anticipating twenty-five employees there, which would potentially be twenty-five people living in town, it could be twenty-five.
That's what I assume, it's most likely gonna be high schoolers or?
There's so many full-time, I don't remember the number.
Not necessarily, and the reason being, if, like, I know my fourteen-year-old has inquired about getting a job at the current dollar store, they can't, because there's an age limit because of tobacco sales.
Yes.
So from that perspective, it's not just a high school student job, it's actually.
They sell tobacco at the dollar store?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, I learned something, okay.
Me too. I don't buy tobacco, so.
Yeah, I don't either, so that's news to me.
But all, I would, I would have a similar view, but for the fact that this infrastructure is enabling further development of the land.
Yeah, see, so, so that, that's news to me, so that's, that, that kind of changes my opinion. The city actually is gonna get a little bit more out of it than they're gonna lose.
Right, because we're not giving away anything that we're currently collecting, so we're collecting some tax on bare land now, which is very.
Agreed, but I also don't wanna subsidize people to.
Right. I agree.
Yeah, if, if.
That doesn't seem fair to the people already here.
Yeah, we've had, exactly, we've had requests over the years, whether it's somebody just wants a tax abatement, or we're not gonna come to town. Well, okay, then don't come to town. There's gotta be a trade-off that's beneficial to the community and the taxpayers as a whole to make these kind of deals, situations, contracts. Otherwise, if there, if there was no infrastructure involved, and it was a shop that was gonna have one or two employees, and they are asking for a hundred thousand dollar abatement, well, there's, there's no benefit to the taxpayer. You know, there's no, the community doesn't benefit from that, so, like I said, it checked all the boxes as far as how it didn't, and we, they had asked for a hundred percent for the ten years or nine years, and the recommendation from Ian and Tim was that we would, sure, five, but then they start paying as, as it goes down, it kind of waterfalls off there.
Yeah, okay.
Now, does that answer your question, though? Yep, good question, perfect. Anybody else? Okay, did I close the public hearing?
You didn't open it yet.
I think you opened it, yeah.
Oh, I haven't opened it yet, okay. Thanks. I'll open the public hearing regarding the tax abatement. Any questions, comments from the public on that? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, now I did close the public hearing. Any other comments or questions from council? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the abatement.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Brandon, have a second.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thanks, Ian, for your work on that, appreciate it. Okay, down to G1, uh, G2, the sand department proposal.
Sure, and this is some exciting news. In, including your package, you've got two items. One of those is a preliminary drawing that the, the sand company has generated, and it kind of shows what they're anticipating or what they have been anticipating. The other item is the, the Vale PUD, which was approved by council, that exhibits included. And what I have to tell you is that the sand company was approved by the state of Minnesota, and I include that in my report, for tax credits, this is a tax credit, moderate income housing, workforce housing project they've been looking at. The council will remember that it was kind of a long process, started in July of, June or July of last year, they came to us and asked for support, some support letters. This is a, would be in a TIF district as well, because it would fit that housing TIF criteria. So this is just information to let you know that we'll be working with them to try and make this lot fit to their needs, to the best of our ability. I know that I've had a good conversation with Brandon already, and we're talking about it, you know, with our staff level, and then we're planning a meeting with Megan Carr, who's the, the lead project manager from Sand on the nineteenth. So what they're looking at right now is this, this building being built, potentially starting the end of this year. There's a lot of steps they have to go through with Minnesota housing before they can start, and lead times and everything as well. So they're looking at fall of, of twenty-three, possibly even spring of twenty-four. So the nice thing about that is it gives us time for kind of the second part of the layout. If you open up that Vale PUD exhibit, you can take a look, and you can see that staff being fiscally responsible have only had the first phase of the road built there, so the extension of Second Street there to the west, which gave access to Hamilton Real Estate as well as access to this lot. There is some question from staff whether we should, knowing that there's an option on that second lot next to Hamilton, as well as this project moving forward, should we extend that road and complete that project now when we have contractors on site, where we would have cost savings for deployment? I don't know, and I, Brandon could talk more with this more, perhaps, with his engineering knowledge, but my thought process is that, you know, if we have this lot moving forward on the north side, possibly the Vale, the second lot for Hamilton Real Estate, also starting in the fall. I know that they're anticipating, you know, July one for opening for their new building. You know, the question is, should we move forward with that or take a look at that? A lot of these costs can be recouped through the lot sales, as well as the other way we would look at possibly extending infrastructure would be using some of those TIF dollars. If you recall, the, the folks from Sand have requested half of their eligible TIF. They asked for ten years of the twenty years in the housing TIF, so we could use the other ten years' funding for, potentially to issue TIF bonds or just to self-finance a project where we would move forward and we would extend those roads. And it would qualify based on the need for, you know, affordable housing, it meets the criteria from the state. So just looking for some feedback from council, if not tonight, then probably in the next couple of, of meetings. We'd like to sort of get started in that, I don't know, Brandon, if you have anything else to add tonight, or not really?
Well, I think you generally hit it, but if the car prop, I'm sorry, the sand property to the north is moving forward, we're gonna have to continue to build that road out and go through the plating process, so then you're, you know, three-quarters of the way there, the last phase, so it seems prudent to just put a pin in it and finish the road up, and then have the lots available, then we don't have to spend any more time building stuff and plating stuff and constructing stuff, and have it kind of ready to go, because you'll have, you know, in theory, three or four lots sold and in construction on the private side of things, so I think that's great.
Would, would you be able to use the existing contractors there to, like, do a change order, or would you have to put it back out to bid?
Potentially, we gotta probably get our stuff in and roll with respect to what are we building, where's the road gonna go, and then we can have that conversation.
Is there a dollar amount on that that we would have to go out to bid again, or?
Eh, likely.
Continuation, there's no exception?
Yep, there is some thresholds that we could.
Were you in contract for, for the first section, or is that already done?
It's partially done, so all the underground infrastructure is in, and then the road is rocked. They just need to come back in the spring, put the curving gutter and the asphalt paving down.
And then at some, and, and, let's see, I'm gonna bring up my map again. That's just this area in right on the map?
Correct, yep.
So.
We would extend to the west there, to that cul-de-sac.
Yeah, so since the building on the north, um.
Driveway.
Sorry?
That is a driveway to serve that area that's not currently built, so we're gonna have to.
Right, right, so we gotta extend that, that red box essentially down to that parking lot on the west side.
Correct, yep.
Okay, so we have to do that already, because, because it has to serve that building that's going in there.
Likely, we need to work with the sand company.
But that, that section's not under contract yet.
Correct.
So basically, we're talking about whether we need to bid from the red line all the way to the cul-de-sac, or just to that parking lot?
Likely, yep.
Right, okay.
I think our fire department and EMS crews would probably appreciate if we finished it, so they have a turnaround space. As that gets more populated, having that ability to get in and out more easily might be, might be something beneficial for them.
Absolutely.
But it's, it's not gonna get any cheaper.
We'll have to, I mean, like you said, Brandon, we have to give a sand company, because all we have is their concept drawings right now.
And you'll note that those don't match exactly, so this, this is all gonna change a little bit, it'll get tweaked.
So we'd see what their final plan is to see how far we need to go on that, but it would make sense if we're gonna do chunk, chunk, chunk. It's gotta be less to just do it, if we've got the mechanism.
To be honest with you, when we bid it out last year, I anticipated the price for that first phase to come in higher. If I had known what it would have come in last year, I probably would have brought it to you and said, why don't we just build the whole thing? But it's also the chicken and the egg. You know, we may be going into somewhat of a housing slowdown, maybe not so much on the multifamily, but on the, on the single family, for sure, we're seeing that. So, you know, I always try to be conservative in saying, you know, we're not gonna build more than we have to. Well, this is an example where now that we know that the lot to the west is potentially spoken for, the lot to the north is also spoken for, you know, we'd like to have that lot available on the end, if, and I brought it up to, to Ms. Carr, you know, about some kind of, perhaps, senior, you know, because we do wanna have multi, different types, too, market rate, workforce, and senior seem to be a good combination to kind of keep the neighborhood fresh, and, so anyway, but yeah, that's kind of where we're here tonight, just to bring it to your minds. I think I'll be talking with Brandon some more, and we'll have some more information for you probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Any questions, get a hold of Tim, if you have anything that comes up in the meantime, but see what the sand company has to say and get their, their final drawing or their plan and stuff figured out with you guys, so.
Yep, we're working on it, we already got, they already have their information, so.
Alright, thank you. New business, implement weather policy.
Sure, including your package, you've got this item, which is based off of some discussion and request from staff to take a look at it. Also, in conversation with some of the other department heads, particularly the library. The library does have an implement policy already in place that they've utilized. So the staff has asked me to bring it to council, and, you know, with some of the weather conditions we've had over the last couple of weeks, even month, you know, you've had a chance to read through it. Basically, they're, they're, they're asking council to take a look at this and see if it would be something that they'd be willing to consider, you know, closing city hall if there was some kind of emergency weather. Typically, we stay open, you know, we're open all the time. You know, as long as we're able to staff the city hall, we stay open, and that's something that we're proud of. We try to provide services for the public, but I know that, you're sure if there was an emergency situation, tornado or something like that, you know, the council wouldn't see it, it'd be strange if we were closed or something like that. But I think with the winter weather, perhaps that's where the staff's coming from in terms of their, their request to review this. So information tonight, if you have any questions on it, please let me know, and, you know, I can bring it to the council again at a future council meeting as well.
Any issues with the union contract on any of this?
I don't foresee any issues with our city hall, public workers union.
Okay.
This is just strictly for city halls, not for the public?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Tobacco licensing.
Sure, this is another issue which has sort of come up here, and Ian conveniently left, so I will talk about it a little bit myself. We received a call from a local business who had some questions about the, the new county tobacco ordinance that was approved by the county commissioners late last year. It impacts their business substantially, and basically, when I spoke with them, I, I noted that the, the city doesn't, doesn't regulate tobacco, it's the county that does that, so the county ordinance is in place there. Doing some research in it, and in a previous community where I served, the city did regulate the tobacco ordinance. So, basically, we're gonna be meeting with the county to see how their implementation is gonna go, and make sure this business, if it's viable to continue in their current location, they'll be able to do so. Otherwise, it is possible for the, and I included the state statute in there, if the city council chose to do so, they could take over regulation of tobacco and issuance of tobacco licenses, which would allow the, you know, the council a little bit greater freedom to establish ordinances and things that might be more beneficial for the business community. So that's, as I say, that's a lot of words.
Well, and, go ahead. Thank you, is it, I, I think I brought this to your attention in November, when a county employee brought it to my attention and was quite proud of it. I would like to look, encourage the council to go forward with having the city issue the tobacco licenses and manage that going forward rather than the county. Because they can come in and make an arbitrary change, and then just tell us and say, hey, here's our new ordinance, here it is, and then you're within so many feet of this, you'll have to close or move. We don't need the county having that kind of control over a business within the city, who's properly in the right place, it's zoned the right way, and the county just coming in arbitrarily changing their ordinance and saying, you have to comply with it. So I would like to see the city pursue that.
Sure.
Take that over and be done.
I think, you know, from, from my perspective, it is possible, it would not be a huge issue for us, I don't think, in terms of the license aspect of it. The other thing is, we do have our own police department, so one of the requirements from the state is that you do, you know, one or two surprise inspections, basically, where they do like a shopper, underage shopper, they, that's, that's a requirement. And in some communities, you know, if you didn't have your own local police department, you'd have to, the county would have to do it, because you wouldn't have that coverage. Here, we do have the capability. So I wanted to bring this to you, just because I do, I do think that we have a time window right now where the county's allowing this business, and any businesses like it, one year, and then they will stop issuing their licenses at the end of 2023. So we have this time period where the council can make a choice whether they want to assert their, their local control over this or not.
And we did, we talked about this with the liquor license and the brewery and being close to TAC, and it's similar to that in terms of, we've got that daycare facility now at.
Sure.
Pos fifty-seven inch, close to the, the smoke shop, so we've, we've talked about it for one aspect, alcohol and now tobacco, so it's kind of similar.
And it's just disappointing, because it, it fit the criteria, it fit the ordinance when we issued both places, hey, yep, you're good, yours own and all that, and then they come back a couple of months after the daycare is approved and say, we changed our ordinance, now it doesn't. Well, why do we wanna give up that control to the, the county?
So this, this concerns between the smoke shop and the daycare?
Yeah.
What, what changed?
The county's saying that you, they're, they're changing, the county's changing the minimum number of feet you have to be away from a tobacco license from a school or a daycare or that facility. They're making it less. So they changed the feet that you can be away.
Yeah, I, I thought when I read this, they're changing it from a thousand feet to two hundred and fifty feet, which is actually, should put it in range.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you'd think that, I think they may have been trying to help, but it still is too close, because the lang, the other language tweak in there is that it's as a crow flies.
Oh, that doesn't make any sense.
From entrance to entrance, right. And in this case, I mean, in some cases, it might make sense, but.
It's definitely over two hundred and fifty feet, and it's not even in view of, you can't be at the daycare and physically see it.
Right, so I mean, if, if the council chose, and it's one of the reasons I included the, the county's ordinance, I mean, the ordinance was, was well-written, they took a lot of time doing it, so I'm not faulting the county staff. It would take, you know, a literally a three-word tweak to say, instead of as the crow flies, it'd be the, the foot distance or the walking distance, and then it would've not been a bottom of an issue, so.
So, um, and, and the municipality, which is us, we can override the county's ordinance then?
We would, we would just, it would be, we would govern that instead of having the county govern it, because we currently don't have the gov, you know, we don't have an ordinance on, on the file.
So basically, we gotta go to the county and say, you know, stay away, we'll handle this. But then we also have to enforce it.
That's right.
Correct.
Okay.
So you're gonna meet with the county, correct?
That's right, we've got a meeting, Ian and I are gonna meet with the county, I think, uh, next Thursday or something like that, and, uh, see exactly what their plan is, and then we'll bring more information to, to the council.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions?
Was that distance thing the only violation of the new ordinance?
That's the only one I'm aware of. It is quite an ordinance, and I may have missed something else in there, so we'll...
Do you maybe wanna talk to, make sure that nothing else changed on them, that might?
Sure, we'll be fully vetting it, um, just to make sure that we're on the same page, so.
Okay, so then, the thought process would be that we would take their county's ordinance and we would just make that smoke shop legal?
Which we could.
By changing a few sentences?
Well, I mean, that is something that could be, I'd be guided by the city attorney, you know, it's a, it's an ordinance thing, I'm sure the city attorney will have some good feedback for me. She may have a better ordinance from a different community that she serves that might work better for us, I don't know. But it wasn't, you know, conceptually speaking, it doesn't have to be an overly difficult process, I'm hoping, that we may be able to adopt a, a section of ordinance that is in part dealing with the situation as a whole.
Okay.
You had a question, too?
I did. The, one of the other things they mentioned in here as, uh, updates to the county ordinance also reflected the following topics: retailers with pharmacies?
Okay.
Is that gonna impact high V?
You know, I don't know, that's not, not something I've taken a look at, but I can take another look at it, too.
Are they within two hundred feet of a crow's...
Well, if they have a...
Yeah, I'm saying, are they close enough to like, um, um, peak, uh, project in jail age, or even, which, they'll be more than two hundred and fifty feet with mice.
Yeah. That's our interpretation, because we're going building the building, so.
And then the crow flies.
Right.
We'll be adding, if we change this, we'll be adding a fee.
Right, so we would take a look at the fees the county certainly, you know, currently has, and we would, you know...
See if it's feasible?
Yeah.
We would make it lower, to bring a business...
It'll be based on whatever the council, uh, desires, and also based on our...
Set your business up in Dodge Center when it's cheaper here.
It'll also be based on our cost. So there will be costs, I mean, there is a cost, the police department has to do these inspections, they have to hire someone to go in and take a look. So, that's something that the council can determine at a future time.
We're not trying to make a profit, we're just trying to cover our costs of what it costs us to take the rights of that in the plan.
I just wanted to make sure we were looking at that.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I know there'll be a cost, and there'll be some staff time, cause Jan will have time, cause it'll, she'll have five or six new licenses she has to process and, and check through, so.
Okay, let us know the meeting goes with the council.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, administrator's report.
All right, I think I've covered a lot of items already, but I'll go through here quick. Um, so yep, we covered the capacity cost rider. Uh, we are seeing a forecasted decrease in the Minnesota state aid for, uh, for our roads there, about four percent lower, so that may have some impact. We're dropping down to three hundred and thirty-three thousand, fifty-nine dollars. Um, I've included a link there if you wanna take a look at it, it's very interesting.
Does that have any direct impact on the extension of Sixteenth Street to the east? Cause weren't we gonna use MSAS dollars for that and borrow ahead, or future dollars?
Yeah, if you'd like me to answer that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so we have, um, don't comment on the exact numbers, um, million in the MSAS bank that we can use on MSAS routes, and then we were gonna borrow five years ahead, so take five times that number that, uh, the administrator just referenced, and that's what we have available to us. And we did request that advance, that's what MINDOT calls it, advance of the borrowing ahead, and that has been approved. Um, between that and the money that MINDOT's kicking in through the program that we, we, uh, got funded through, we're gonna have enough money to do the project.
So that leaves us short on something we've already started doing.
No, but it'd be something to keep an eye on. Because their forecast for next year is four percent lower, and they're forecasting it to only decrease, because, well, which is a change in different things. I mean, gas taxes, flat, we're seeing fewer actual vehicles that are using gasoline, so the volumes are down, so we'll be tracking that. So it may not affect this project, it'll, it very likely could affect the project.
We could probably make up for that with a little bit of the seventeen billion dollars, couldn't we?
Well, I mean, I'm sure the legisla, that's my next thing. Legislative session begins, so the legislators will, they'll get an opportunity to, uh, figure out what they wanna do. And so far, the highlights, the bills that are out are legalizing marijuana fully, and, uh, a couple of other things that, um, you know, we'll see, does seem to be the priority this year, which is, it's a little disappointing, they haven't been talking more about the infrastructure, but I'm sure that will come. Um, so I've kinda just got it right up in there. For us and our electric utility, we're tracking some of the, um, legislation with, uh, EVs, you know, EV penetration in, in the Rochester metro is growing significantly, and so it's something we have to plan for when we're rebuilding our infrastructure, rebuilding our electric lines. So we're seeing the count, the card count continue to go, and it's, it's interesting seeing more of the vehicles that are a little bit lower price as well. You know, historically, it's kinda been a couple different models, like the Tesla. I was driving behind you yesterday, man, it was smooth, you dodged the potholes really well, but, uh, and I'm, I'm thirty-four, you need to. But, uh, so that's something that we're tracking, because it does mean, it's not so much the cost for us, it's as infrastructure. When we have, say, an entire road of houses where everybody's bringing in, they're plugging in their vehicles all at the same time, we have to make sure that our capacity and our transformers are, are matched up to that. So, we'll be tracking that. Uh, we had some questions about overtime costs, we did have a substantial overtime, uh, just to let you know, early part of this year, snow plowing, uh, we had approximately two hundred hours so far this year of overtime that was utilized. Um, some of that cost is being made up by the, the two open positions that we currently have, uh, which we will be looking to fill tonight. Um, so hopefully, we're at coast to break even. I'll let our finance staff, uh, let us know, she'll be keeping me in the loop, I'm sure, as we go forward. Um, the other issue that we've identified is that most of our new applications do lack a CDL. The state and the department, federal department of labor, uh, substantially has increased the burden for cities and increased the cost of the CDLs. Um, so, uh, we are encouraging employees, um, to, uh, get the CDL on their own and then looking at possibly stepping them up a great, uh, stepping up a step on the payroll schedule, which would be kind of a reward for them to do themselves. Otherwise, we end up having more cost than the city paying for it, which is kind of how it's done right now. So, we'll, uh, just keep you in the loop on that, but we, we do expect to have those two new folks starting tonight. Another question tonight, or another item, charitable gambling. Uh, so this has come up a little bit before, we had a representative of an organization that wanted to take over a location in town, um, that basically said that he disagrees with how we do it. Currently, what we do is, we don't, uh, the city doesn't take anything out of the proceeds of charitable gambling, most communities do. Um, they're allowed to take up to ten percent of charitable gambling proceeds. Um, we don't do any of that, we do ask them to, to spend eighty percent of that money in our service area. Now, something the city clerk and I have talked about is documentation on that spend, um, because we aren't necessarily getting that right now from the organizations that that currently do pull tabs or do the gambling in, in Cassin. So, the representative recommended, he asked us to go back to the, kind of what the standard is for most cities, which is that we take the ten percent of proceeds, and then they're allowed to use the funds as they want to in different areas or for whatever they wanna do. So, I included that section of the code in, uh, your, for your consideration as well, um, or I will be considering, and I'll be adding that in, so you can take a look at it. Just something to have, um, I know the assembly meeting is this, uh, scheduled, talk about a little bit this month in Cassin, so I'm gonna listen to that and see what they have to say, so, just, uh, giving you a heads up on that. Other than that, I do have one other item in the packet there, it's just the USA final letter of conditions. So just a head, a heads up that, uh, we were able to get in before the first of the year, at least on the, the financial side of it, so, uh, our, our interest rate was locked in, so, um, this is a positive for us with our project, and there was a number in there that was, uh, I know the mayor had a question about. So, uh, the maximum amount that we will ever finance will be seven million, because that was what the, the voters voted on. Um, so, that isn't, uh, gonna change, and if it comes in higher than that, we need to take a look at what we wanna do. The council will certainly have an option to take a look at what they wanna do, just to let you know. And I would take any questions with that.
Not on that, but you mentioned something, really, do you wanna introduce the new finance director?
Oh, sure, absolutely, that's a great idea. In fact, I think she met a couple of you. Um, this is Jessica Royer, she is handling the finance portfolio as well as, as she learns that, hopefully she'll be able to handle a few other projects, we wanna try and bring her in and have her learn everything. And so far, she's, uh, she's, she's got, you know, she said she'd have the deer in the headlights look tonight, but I think she's doing pretty well so far. Um, but no, she's, uh, she's taking the vote by the horns, and, uh, we do have a contract with Nancy to do, come in and do some consulting hours, which is gonna be really helpful, because as Jessica works through the daily work, she finds things that she doesn't know how to answer, and, um, Nancy will be able to help her with some of those questions. I'm also, um, devoting more time this year to the financial portfolio, um, you know, I'll be reviewing all of our investments, kinda some of the stuff that Nancy was doing that Jessica doesn't have a lot of experience, that I expect over time that she's gonna learn, but for this year, I'll be handling that along with Mr. Buvani when we do our bond issuances and stuff like that. So, I feel comfortable saying that, you know, with Jessica, we should be in good hands, and, and hopefully, you know, we'll be able to keep her for a long time, so.
Welcome. Thank you. Okay, engineers' report, uh, two thousand and twenty-three street improvements.
Well, thank you, Mayor, council, this is a continuation of the hearing we just had, so I won't spend too much time on the details, we just heard all about them. Um, ultimately, in your council packet is the final construction plans, a resolution to approve the plans, um, and then the advertisement for bids to ultimately go out for the bid. So, jumping into the plans, uh, the first two sheets, you see we have Schedule A there, um, that's the area to be, uh, ultimately reclaimed and paved as part of that street reconstruction project, um, that we're calling the two, two thousand and twenty-three street improvements. Um, sheet three there, we have a Schedule B, we're not proposing to assess this work. This is just kinda cleaning up some stuff that myself and Public Works have kinda seen throughout the community. Uh, the left or upper left-hand sheet there, uh, you can see it's the end of Sixteenth Street on the far east side of the project out of Dodge County fifteen. Uh, you may know in the winter, we all end up ultimately developing a dip there. Um, what we ultimately had during construction was, uh, when we were final paving that project, uh, we actually found a culvert that wasn't even exposed, that may have been in for who knows how long, um, that ultimately collapsed underneath our paving operation. So, what we did was we ultimately tore that culvert out, um, had the contractor do an emergency repair, uh, dumped a bunch of rock kind of in the hole if you were where the culvert was, compacted all up good. Um, what we've ultimately found now is the adjacent soil is a lot of clay, and it's doing the exact opposite of what people typically think. Uh, clay has water, water in the winter expands, water expands and ultimately heaves up our roads, um, if there's a lot of clay. So that's, we have really good compaction underneath where the culvert was, is our emergency repair, but we have too much clay around there. So what we're looking at doing, cutting some of that pavement out, uh, taking some of that good rock out, put some clay material and mixing it in, uh, leveling it back all flat and repaving that, so that's, uh, included in there. Um, the upper right-hand corner, um, is up by the athletic facilities, north and east of the school, the entrance into Common Acres, uh, we've experienced some traffic kinda cutting that corner, um, so we've included that, uh, in the project, because no better time to do it now, we have some economy scale, as opposed to Public Works, um, ultimately soliciting quotes for this project, so, um, they've ultimately asked me to include it in the project. So, that's what we've done, and that's kind of the, the kind of the sidebar, the side project that's included in our two thousand and twenty-three street improvements, we've added that in there. And again, we've shown it as a separate schedule, cause we're not proposing to assess that work, but we have a paving contractor and a concrete contractor that's gotta come to town anyway for the project, so we thought it was the best interest of the city to add that in there. Um, so that's the construction plans, um, resolution proving plans, um, you've done this a couple times a year now. Um, ultimately, um, by passing the resolution, we'll authorize staff to put the advertisement for bids, um, in the local paper, um, and start the public bidding process, um, and then we'll ultimately be opening bids as scheduled on Friday, February third at eight-thirty, um, and then we'll be continuing the assessment process at that point, um, and then ultimately considering award on March eighth, so there is again that timeline in there where we have bids, have the final assessment hearing and then award it at the March meeting, um, to ultimately, uh, have the project, uh, bid, and then we have that completion date of October first, uh, twenty-three, we mentioned earlier. So, with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, and then ask for your consideration of the resolution.
Okay. Any questions for the engineer? Before we, that, anybody, Paul, anything? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the, uh, to approve the plans and the advertisement for bids?
I'll make that motion.
Stand, I have a second. Thanks Mel, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Brandon, and then quick update on some of the projects. Uh, stole some of the thunder there, Tim did, uh, during the administrative report, but, uh, yeah, MSAS money, uh, has been going down, but with that said, uh, we do have a fair amount in the bank, and we did off, or did ask MINDOT to advance, uh, for our project in conjunction with the roundabout project, uh, cause that was the council's direction. Um, his past decisions that were made was that was the most important, uh, kinda road segment to build, was that Sixteenth Street from the high school intersection around about fifty-seven, construct the roundabout and then ultimately build to the dump road or Dodge County twenty-one. Uh, so we got that advanced, uh, we're, we're wrapping up the roundabout project, uh, plans with MINDOT, they're in the final, final review, so I'll likely be at the next council